We're over there.
I didn't know I was presenting.
Who is that? Engel?
Okay. I'll call him up.
Is there a place to go?
Brian?
Maybe to the...
Good morning. Good morning. I'd like to call to order the Pasco Board of County Commissioners Stormwater Workshop for February 18th, 2025. At this time, please silence all electronic devices and mute your phones. Please rise to the invocation and pledge allegiance. Please call the roll.
District one, Commissioner Oakley.
Here.
District two, Commissioner Whitman.
Present.
District four, Commissioner Jager.
On our way.
District five, Commissioner Mariano.
Here. Across the county. In light of the recent hurricanes that impacted our region, this is crucial. This is a crucial opportunity for us to engage in a comprehensive discussion on how we can better manage and mitigate stormwater impacts. I'd like to extend a special thank you to the representatives from the Southwest Florida Management District. Brian, thank you so much for being here. Your expertise and support are invaluable as we navigate these issues together. Mr. Carbella?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
No, this is Mrs. Chair.
Oh, Madam Chair is here.
I sent out a text.
Brian Armstrong here.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right, maybe she can call in.
All right. So just, you know, you hit the points well there, Commissioner Mariano. We're here today to educate the board and the public on things that are currently being done in the area of stormwater management. That's everything from maintenance, we'll start off with Public Works, to resiliency and even permitting. And so we've got a lot of presentations, a lot of information out there to throw at you, but I'd like you to take that information, digest it, and if there's things or policies or areas that the board would like staff to explore further, certainly this is the forum for us to kind of have a conversation related to that. So I'm going to turn it over to our Public Works Director, Mr. Jason Mickel, to get us started off today.
All right. Am I just sitting here delivering the presentation?
Sorry for texting me on the holiday.
No, it was good. Oh, and by the way, there was a smoke test. So, all right, well, thank you. I'm Jason Mickel. Is that good? No? All right, thank you. All right. So...
Can everybody hear me okay? Yeah? All right, good. All right, well, thank you, members of the board. Chair Roman Starkey, I appreciate the opportunity to be here today. Public Works wanted to take the lead this morning, walk you through our efforts in stormwater management throughout the county. We have our guests today, our Swift Mud staff. Brian Armstrong is here with his team. I thank them for coming this morning after a holiday weekend to be here with us, to... They're going to go last this morning. They're going to walk you through some of the things that they do on stormwater management. Brian will give you a few minutes on that. But what we're going to do here this morning, Public Works staff is going to walk you through a quick presentation, then we're going to turn it over to other staff here within the county. Mark Bellis is here. He's going to walk you through his sustainability office. Andy Fassa is here. He's going to talk you through some of the flood insurance process. And of course, David Allen is here with David Engel, and they have some slides that they're going to show you as well. So again, there's our participants, and then our agenda for Public Works. Give you a quick overview of stormwater and watershed management, what the contributors are to flooding, what we do in Public Works for stormwater management, talk about our enforcement authority, what exactly we do in Public Works. And then I was just going to touch real quick on the hurricanes, the 2024 hurricane season. So it all starts with rain, right? We know we're in Florida. We have 50 inches of rain approximately on average. Rainfall hits the roofs, hits streets, hits the grass, ends up moving throughout the system. As we know, Florida is very flat, but it does move, and it ends up in some water body. One thing that's occurred over time, over the past 30 years or so, improvements in storage, in conveyance, and water quality. So a lot of that water ends up in stormwater ponds or in other stormwater management systems, partly to control flooding, but also to improve water quality. This is a map of Pasco County, and what you'll see here are all our watersheds broken down. And you could see some of the trouble spots on there. It's a little bit hard to read up there. I was hoping it'd look a little better, but you could see Hickory Hills up near Dade City. South of that is the Silver Oaks area by Zephyr Hills. And then further west, you have the Aaron Cut Off area over in center of... over by Connerton 41.
When you say watershed, are you calling that, is that a basin?
Essentially.
How did you divide that?
So wherever the water, where the rain hits the ground, it's... that watershed is where that water stays and has to discharge. So those waterways that are within that watershed that you see, any drop of water that hits in that delineated area has to drain through that water system.
I'd love a copy of that.
Sure.
Have you seen that map before? Even on the Swift Mud board?
I thought I've heard Zephyr Hills is in a closed basin, right?
Parts of Zephyr Hills are in closed basins.
Closed basin.
Yeah. Yep, exactly. And then this next slide is just a picture of the 100-year floodplain. And what I'm showing you here, everything you see in blue is delineated as a 100-year floodplain. So many areas throughout our county are vulnerable to flooding.
Did you give us a hard copy of this?
I will get you a hard copy ASAP. All right, contributors to flooding, heavy rainfall. It all starts with rain. If you don't have heavy rainfall, you're not going to have flooding essentially, unless... well, we'll talk about one other area where you can get flooding without rainfall. But like I mentioned, 50 inches of rainfall, that's about our average, and we're all Floridians now. We know that's an average of extremes, right? You can have 30 inches one year, and you can have 80 inches another, right? So it's usually never 50. Storm surge, that's the one you could get flooded without any rainfall through storm surge. We all saw that this year with Helene. Closed basins, Commissioner Oakley just mentioned, we do have many closed basins throughout the county. Zephyr Hills, we learned a lot of lessons with closed basins this year, and we're in Dade City, and we're still learning those lessons. The pre-storm regulations. Many developments in Tempe area, Pasco County, were built before there was any regulations in place. So they just built the communities and didn't necessarily...
Uh-oh. Welcome to our world.
Thank you. So they didn't necessarily have any way to convey the water, store the water, move the water throughout the community. I could tell you what rests on that slide is infrastructure, right? So infrastructure gets put in place, but not all infrastructure gets maintained. So you have to make sure you have a proactive infrastructure program to keep that stuff working the way it needs to. And then there's infrastructure on public lands, right? Which the county maintains, and there's also infrastructure on private communities, right? So we have to make sure that we're both... that everything is being maintained properly, right? So our infrastructure as well as the private infrastructure. Well, I'm glad I remembered that. So, and just to show you a big picture, you know, our strategy is to minimize and abate flooding. You can eliminate all flooding, but our main strategy in Public Works is to minimize and abate flooding. And our tactics to do that, stormwater maintenance, as I mentioned, we have a very proactive stormwater maintenance program, which means we send our op staff out routinely to go out and make sure that our infrastructure is maintained properly, and if it's not, we send out teams to fix it and update it or replace it. Our investment in our infrastructure, this stuff comes before the board all the time. You know, we were always sending stuff to the board for approval, whether it's for our covert program or for large maintenance operations or for new equipment or for new staff. So we're always coming to the board for additional resources to make sure that we're investing properly in infrastructure, and the board has done amazing work with that over the years. We work with our partner here at the Water Management District on our watershed management plans. That helps us delineate those watersheds that you saw, and it also helps us model any development that may occur in those watersheds. We review offsite impacts. So that's something that our team does when a new development comes in for approval. They send it over to us to take a look at it and make sure that we're working with their engineer of record to ensure that there's not going to be offsite impacts. Our capital improvement... Oh, Commissioner...
You just bring up a question. When you're looking at new developments and they're coming in, I've seen lately, they're build up a product that's coming in for townhomes or something. I noticed in Zephyr Hills, county property is at a certain level. They come in and build that property, that new for those townhomes and all, they build it up five feet, which entirely leaves that property of the county in a hole, in a bowl, and it flooded this time. But that new property they're coming in, they're way above that.
But are they... is our property below... it's not developed, right?
But with all the rain we had during that period in time, the water built up and came out of their retention pot right into that bowl, and it flooded those homes in there. So somehow, and we find that a lot, even throughout the county, a new project comes in next to another, they won't have any issue because they're building their land up, say, three feet or four feet. The property that's been there all this time before hadn't had any issue, but now this property's built up, all that water runs around that and comes into this lower property and creates a problem. So I mean, I think you'll find that all over the county, that we're having that issue.
I think we're going to get into, you know, the development side as well as the regulations, and I think we'll be able to touch on what's happening in those types of situations.
Right. Thanks, Commissioner. As I was mentioning, our capital improvement plan, we are implementing projects annual. I'll show you a couple of success stories on some of those stormwater projects that we've completed, some that we're working on. But not only are they to help minimize flooding impacts, but we are incorporating into those projects, and the board has asked us about this, are we improving water quality with those projects as well? So we're trying to make sure, you know, look, we learned our lessons this year with the storm. I'll talk a little bit about that. We know that we have issues and hotspots that are being identified through our master plan, that we're going to be trying to improve the flooding, but then we also know that we should be improving water quality in those areas as well. And then the last is the stormwater master plan, and I'll talk about that in a few minutes. So real quick, again, stormwater maintenance can't eliminate flooding, right? Our goal is to abate flooding. And I wanted to mention here real importantly, we have a proactive process in operations to make sure that we are getting out and addressing 70%. Our goal is 70% proactive. So what I mean by that is we are getting our guys out there. We're TVing all of our pipes. We're cleaning all our storm drains. We're making sure our swells are maintained. We want to make sure that we're on top of that. We have a regulatory requirement of about 10% to make sure we're hitting 10% of our infrastructure every year, but we try to well exceed that to make sure that we're keeping our infrastructure at the highest possible level we can. Now, of course, do we have reactive times when a pipe breaks? We get called out in the middle of the night? Yes, that's going to happen. But again, I want to mention our covert replacement program. This board has invested a lot of money into that covert replacement program, and our team has gone out and made a huge difference in the community. Think of some of the areas, if you think back, that used to flood really bad on the west side of the county, center of county, even on the eastern side. Many of those areas have been addressed through our covert replacement program. And that's a testament to the board's investment in our team and allowing us to get out there and get those fixed.
And Jason, if I could add to that, that the Public Works team has done that within the existing stormwater assessment. So they've reallocated dollars into the proper areas of maintenance to ensure a lot of those historically flooded areas aren't really flooding anymore during, or at least when they should, they shouldn't be flooding.
Thanks, Mike. All right, so our master plan, I mentioned, we're hopeful that this thing will get done a little early, but you know, we are... I don't want to overpromise anything, but we are on track to have it done August 2025. And the master plan will provide several key things for us, right? One is a look at all the current conditions throughout all of our infrastructure and throughout the county, identify some of these trouble spots. And the reason I put that there is because there's many trouble spots now that are on our minds, that we've all... we're all familiar with now for at least the past year, right? And you know, many of the board members go way back, and there's many other ones that you have on your mind, but this year in particular, there's several that really came up. So we wanted to make sure, and Mike pushed me on this, to make sure that we were incorporating the lessons learned from this storm season into our master plan. It's ripe. It's right now. That master plan's on top of us. We can't just finish it and be like, well, the timing wasn't right. So we made sure we're working with our consultant, our third-party team, our team of engineers to ensure that we were incorporating all those lessons learned.
Was that your last slide?
No. Unfortunately.
Okay, I'm going to talk to the administrator. No, after the meeting about our technology issues.
There's a component that's on order currently for that.
Okay. This happens to us in our board meetings.
Welcome to your world.
Yes. Y'all don't know it.
All right, we're back. We're back. No harm. All right, where was I? Yeah. So... A key thing I wanted to drive home about the master plan is we are going to end up with a list of many projects, but most importantly, 15 of our most critical projects ranked by our team and our third-party consultant that are going to incorporate these lessons learned, as well as all the other areas throughout our county that we are going to address as quickly as possible. We're going to get an estimate of the costs of those projects, and then how do we fund them, right? So we know its projects, we know what the cost, and then how are we actually going to fund these things? So they're also going to work with our third-party or fourth-party consultant to look at a rate study, right? So how do we... can we fund them in year one, or do we need a 20-year funding period? So in other words, do we need to go out for lending for these projects? So...
Well, can we use any of the HUD money for this?
Yes. Yes. And we're looking at that. Absolutely. All right, it's back. Nope.
Well, I hope my staff gave it to me, but...
Oh, you got it printed out?
Yeah. They need it for everybody.
Just to keep it rolling, I would say that we, you know, we have several successful capital projects that we've been working on, and those, you're probably familiar with some of those. Iron Bark, Commissioner Mariano is familiar with. That's a recently successful project that we've completed. On the... over on the east side, we just did the New River Project, which was an effort to get in and get a lot of debris, improve conveyance, which also will improve flow and water quality throughout that section of the river. Everybody knows the Maggie Valley Project. It's not done, but we are looking at that project, and all right, it's back. So the good thing about that project is we've had some direction from the board. Internally, staff is looking at options on how to make that project work. I just want to throw into the middle of the table the discussion on 404 permitting. If anybody's not aware, the 404 permitting process has delayed some of our projects. So...
What is that? What is it?
Maybe the president will fix it.
I was going to put my arm... I was going to put my hand on him, but I figured... So the Army Corps of Engineers, yeah. Yeah. Thank you.
Oh, then they got it back.
As of right now, several of our projects that have any impacts to wetlands, perceived impacts to wetlands, on the coast especially, have been held up with the 404 permitting process. So we're working through it. We have pre-application meetings set up, and we're going to keep trying to move forward. We're not just sitting back saying, oh, I guess we're not going to get it done. We're going to keep trying to move those projects forward. And Commissioner Starkey, you mentioned the HUD money, some of the projects that we have in design phase, like Seapines, Afield Drive, and Green Key, some of those projects may be good candidates for HUD dollars. In fact, as the Bordeaux's, we met with the federal government a few weeks ago and then took them on a tour of the area on the west side of the county. So we also plan on having another meeting for them to bring them over to the center and the east side of the county as well.
Just like to say, I didn't get a chance to talk to you, but I did talk to Brian already, talked to Brian for... I think it's going to be important that we get a letter together for the president and whoever up there in DC to say, we need relief from this 404 permit. And I think if we have Swift Mud working with us to put a joint letter together, it may carry some weight to make an impact up there.
Maybe we can make an appearance when we go up to Washington.
That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah.
We'll work on that. Sir, we have staff here. We've heard it. We've heard your request on that, and we'll make that happen. Okay? So I'm winding down here, I know thankfully, but I just wanted to show you really quick, our enforcement authority in Public Works is specifically related to the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, or NPDES, everybody knows about, right? We have BMPs that we look at, and BMPs are best management practices, right? Essentially, we're looking at illicit discharges. So if anybody's taking a hose off their property and sending it somewhere else, or they're dumping a tanker truck, or there any type of impacts to our stormwater system, we can step in and say, hey, you're not allowed to do that. Illegal dumping. Any illegal dumping, anything that ends up in the right of way, we can enforce. If it's on private property, we can work with our code enforcement team to make sure that those are also getting addressed. And then onsite, we have our erosion and sediment control team. So they're going to look at, are you bringing... are your silk fences up? Are you dragging any, you know, sediment and dirt into communities? And then, you know, we'll look at any other related to the onsite development through those BMPs. And then the hurricanes. Everybody knows we had three storms this year. Everybody kind of forgets about Debbie, but Debbie was part of a very wet event that led up to our very wet summer, and then led us into Helene and into Milton. Rainfall, 80 inches in 2024, the wettest on record at Tampa Airport. That's a pretty amazing thing when you think about it. It was 80 inches of rain, which was actually the wettest. And then in both sides of the county, on the east side and the west side, we saw 75 to 76 inches of rain. And those were records as well. And those were measured at rain stations over in the Zephyr Hills area and then also in Trinity. So we had quite a bit of rain. There's a slide that's coming up here in a second, but I could speak to it. If you look at the graphs just for October, right? The rainfall data for October, here, I'll show you. The rainfall data for October was 20 to 30 inches of rain to Pasco County, which is about, and that's just October, right? That's 400 to 500% higher than we receive on average. So it's quite a bit of rainfall for just the month of October. So and then you look, if you look closely at that map on the left side, you can see blue on the east side of the county, which is 20 inches or more of rainfall, 500 to 600% of the rainfall for October. So this is actual rain gauge data that showed up on the NOAA site. So this is a reason why we had some significant flooding in some of those areas. And the last thing I want to show you is just a series of really quick rivers staging maps. Each one of these either hit a record, exceeded a record for a major period of time, or stayed above a major flood stage for an extended period of time. So here you see the Ain Coat bouncing up against a record. Cypress Creek exceeded the record and stayed above that stage. With Lakucha, continued to crest over the period of weeks, as we know. So this doesn't even tell the whole story. And then last is the Hillsborough, which exceeded a record as well. So you could see, if you connect this back to my watershed map, that these things, these rivers being an extreme major flood stage or exceeding records, well, it takes them a really long time to move that water throughout the system, throughout that watershed, all the way down to either Tampa Bay or to the Gulf of Mexico. So these rivers being at the... So these, these rivers being at these high stages just exacerbated the problem over time. So with that, I'll either open up for questions for me, if that's the pleasure of the board, or I'll turn it over to our next presenter.
Mr. Oakley.
With Lakouchi, the first time, I've been there my entire life, first time I've ever seen Lakouchi come up to 301 and under 301 during this phase of the flooding, and that, did we get a picture, we showed a hard picture a while ago of the 100-year flood plain in the water setup, did we get a picture of that in comparison for the 100 and 500-year that we've had during those storms, to show a difference in that map and that 500-year?
So I know one of the things that we had done, Commissioner, is we had commissioned aerial flights and photography over the county immediately following Milton, and part of the rationale for that too, at least when I was talking with emergency management team members, is let's, let's see how this compares. And so, yeah, we've, we've collected that data, I mean, it tracks with the 100-year floods, but to your point, it's, it went beyond that. So we're sharing that data with parties in order to learn and, and to, you know, develop better tools for predicting.
And, and part of that fact is there's a big difference in the two, and a lot of things got affected, because we're, we only plan stormwater at all for the 100-year plan. So look what happened to us in this year when it expanded that. I think for some way or other, we need to change the way we develop these properties going forward, that we take care of that extra water that might follow us at some given time. You never know when it is, I know there's an expense to that, but I think we need to look at that, so we don't create prob, as we continue developing, we're not creating ourselves a worse problem down the road. So I think we need to look at that.
I think that's an excellent segue, Commissioner, into Planning and Development's presentation, talking about development conditions, and, you know, so before I, to bring David Engel up, did anyone have any other questions?
Segue away. Well, with SWIFTMUD changing direction a little bit with now doing, finding water sources, et cetera, I think there's an opportunity on the table to actually look at doing both now. When I look at the basin of special concern that's around the Hickory Hills area, you've got a bunch of empty land that's there, that sits up really high, probably clay-based, Mike Commissioner Oakley?
Right.
Okay, so it holds the water, which makes it really tough. I think there's an opportunity, especially in that little area there, and not that area, it's a pretty big-sized area, if you built a reservoir there, you've got all the water that flows down to the north, that really gets stuck at Tank Lake, getting up to with Lakouchi, because that's where we've got some pumps going to try to relieve some of that pressure, you could hold a lot of water. It would, I think, take these big storm events and put us in a good position and create extra water if we had, if we had a drought, to really, to tap into that later on. I'm not sure about to the, to the, even further south yet, but I think that whole east side we should be taking a look at, because they struggled so much, they had a couple of rain bands from Debbie, et cetera, and other storm events that were going on, that even in the summertime, before Hurricane says was at its peak, I would try to drive around there on GPS, I would drive one way, where GPS would take me, and then roads blocked, drive another way, blocked. So even before the storms really hit Helene and Milton, they were in trouble, and the storm just made it worse. So I think it kind of can work in line with what SWIFTMUD wants to do, at the same time create, create stormwater. When we look at Tampa Bay water, the reservoir, that storm in Helene, when that came in, was able to take so much of the water and fill up the reservoir real quick, instead of just going out to the Gulf and whatever, it made a big difference in Tampa Bay water. So I think there's opportunities there, there may be elsewhere in the region too, but I'd like to really take a look, a strong look at that, because I think there's an opportunity there.
I have a question, and I don't, you know, if you think it's better to wait till after your presentation, or, I'm not sure who's, who would answer this one, but after one of the hurricanes a few years ago, we got a federal grant to clean out a portion of the Anclot River to help... Okay, my blue light is back on. Have you got me now?
No, ma'am.
So what's going on with our IT?
I just know there is a component, at least it's related to the video, the sound's kind of a new one to me, that they've had a part on order that's, that's supposed to come in to alleviate that after the last board meeting, they accelerated that, so...
And while we're waiting for that to be fixed, the smaller stormwater is the next presentation. They're all out there.
Yes, okay. So, so I, I went and watched the crews working on the river, pulling out the trees, it was some beautiful wood coming out of the river. But that's the only time I've ever seen us do a river cleanout, and I don't even know what it's called. So I wonder if there's, if it's advantageous to work on...
Conveyance-type projects?
Yes. I mean, we have three rivers, right?
What was that, just trees, trees and...
They pull trees, they pull trees out of the river. Andrew, you want to speak on that?
Yeah, I think it might have been through HMGP after the storm. That was probably part of the, when we got our award, and that was probably one of the projects that we put in and got approved.
Uh, sorry, Commissioner Waitney.
Thank you.
That's good, that's normal. But my question is, so when we, so when rain started first calling, you know, we had exams of different CDDs calling in, hey, we're flooding, and then we send out emergency crews to fix the problem and find that the blockage isn't on the counties, it's on the CDDs, and it was clear after the storm that we need continuity, communication, a plan between systems. So what's our, our strategy to communicate with these CDDs and these CDD boards to understand the health of their stormwater systems, if they need help improving, I mean, they have budgetary authority just like this board does, but if our systems, our systems are all interconnected, if they have a failure on their end, it's just compounding, so what do we, what's our plan to communicate with all the neighboring CDDs and stormwater systems that are not within our control?
And HOA.
And HOAs, to make sure that all the systems are flowing properly and in good working order?
So I know in, in some of the worst-case situations, our ops teams, through their proactive maintenance, they can find issues, even though if they're not necessarily in our infrastructure, they know if there's a bottleneck, they know if there's an issue with drainage, and what we've tried to do was work with those communities, pre, pre-hurricane season, pre-storm season, pre-summer, to, to alert them of the issue, and alert them of, hey, there are some issues within the community, it's your responsibility to get them fixed. We have worked with them in the past, we, we do check with our, our legal team as well, right there, she's over my shoulder, I could feel her, but we, we do, we do try to work with our communities if there's a regional issue, and if there's, there's a need that can impact county residents. We, we have worked with these communities in the past to, to help them with restoring the conveyance, the proper conveyance and storage that they should have, if there are impacts, regional impacts. So those are case by case, we work internally with our, with our legal team on, on making sure we do that. Now, moving forward, how do we work with all of them? How do we communicate with all of them? I think that's, that's something we need to take on, and make sure that they're, they're looking at their infrastructure, they're looking at their maintenance, and they're, they're abiding by their permit that they have, so that there's not going to be any flooding onsite, and then any offsite impacts as well.
What you've described is a reactive measure, right?
Yep.
We don't know there's a problem until there's a problem. So I'd like to, within this plan, find a, however we do a, a better way to communicate with these folks, require them either give, you know, I think they have to give updates to the Water Management District or with us, but we all know what's going on, especially leading into a rainy season, because when things happen to these communities, they call us, they don't call their CDD board, and we call you, and then you're putting your crews out that potentially harms the way, and then the report comes back, it's not necessarily county's responsibility. So, you know, I just think that we, there's room for improvement there, and I don't know what the plan is, but I think it's important that we come up with...
Following up on what you were speaking of, I know you have a lot of territory, and if I recall, you had two gentlemen covering all your counties on following up on, on HOAs and their stormwater ponds. John, was it John? He retired.
He retired.
Yeah, so, and I've had him speak at various meetings in the past where I brought HOA leaders together to remind them of the importance of their stormwater pond maintenance and others. Can you, can you tell us again what the requirements are?
So the requirements just changed in the new ERP rule that was ratified last year. It requires more frequent reporting, how they are to report that. It also requires how you're going to pay for that may, operation and maintenance long-term. We have more than two people, you're just familiar with the two that we sit there in Pasco.
That's what John used to say, it's only two of us.
Yeah, for Pasco, but we have 16 other counties.
Oh, I thought it was for all the counties.
No, we have 16 other counties.
Oh.
They have a plate full.
Okay.
So, yeah, so they're, so with the new ERP rule that was ratified, they, they have to now turn in those inspections, are required to do those inspections more frequently, report that back to us. Now, when you see John and those folks, there's usually a problem, it's a compliance issue, something has failed in their system, usually due to lack of maintenance. So when we go out on a call like that, we usually file it with compliance, if they comply and, and fix the issues immediately, we're good. If not, we then pursue other action through our board to address those issues.
Lots of times, you know, when, when a, a new community is built and it gets turned over to the residents, they have no idea of, of these requirements. So how, how do they get notified? Is that...
Most districts have a district engineer.
Okay, I'm not talking about CDD districts.
They all have to have a...
Yeah.
Yes, but if they, if it's a, if it's not a CDD district, we have a lot of little communities that have smaller ponds, how, how do they...
If most people, most of them, most HOAs, if you read their documents, it's in there.
Okay.
So I know a lot of people will go through the home buying process and look at a thousand documents and just sign, but this information about the stormwater system is in those deeded documents held at the clerks.
And I know in my neighborhood, Aristida, we just did an assessment, because we all had to, we had to do a lot of work on our stormwater system. I think Jack was next, and then I'll go back to you.
Thank you. Couple of projects, one we're, we're working together on is the northern outfall over in Port Ritchie, which will take a lot of stormwater out, it gets it out to the Gulf, which is great. At the same time, there's another opportunity, the southern outfall, which we had used, that didn't get funded, didn't quite have the same numbers because the other one is going through. But we got a tremendous amount of research done. If we do that project coming up, and maybe the funding source we can use with the CDV GDR, because if it gets the stormwater back out to the Gulf, it's going to free up everything behind it, you improve water quality, a lot of other, other things, I think it's something that we should take a look at. But to touch on what we were just talking about as far as HOAs, Commissioner Starkey and I sat with DEP, SWIFTMUD, Army Corps of Engineers for a long time about Trinity. What we found was the, the waterways you get out there, if you get it out there, it would, it flowed, but the conveyance wasn't working. There was one property, the Reserve in HOA, that had the cover that was probably like eight to 10 feet wide, was down like a foot. SWIFTMUD was amazing going in there and getting them to go clean that thing out. The community right before it, or right before it, was Oak Ridge. They keep all their things clean, the water flows, they never flood, because the water can get out. Behind it though, in the whole Trinity thing, there's a way that water is supposed to flow, but the Army Corps won't let us get it. I'm thinking this may be another thing that we can try to work with now that Trump's in, to go free up that rule, because the HOA would love to get it done, maybe even partner with them to get it done, but if that water could flow, you could take a whole community that just suffered some major flooding this, this whole summer, and get that water out, instead of having pumps out of place.
We'd like to get it out ahead of a large rain event, but we can't open the vents, the gates, we're restricted in opening the gates, when, when we all know it, it isn't flooding anyone downstream. Who is Jason, is that your department?
Yes.
Yeah.
So we, we have a, a protocol for each gate that we follow. Some of those gates, Commissioner Starkey, you know this as well as anybody, so I don't need to tell you, but you know some of those gates are meant to hold water back for environmental purposes, natural system purposes, and, and then during storms, we declare, you know, an emergency, we, we do what we kind of need to do in those situations, and we open the gates. We communicate that with our, with our partners when we are doing that, and we do ensure through our engineering team that we are not impacting downstream folks by having those gates open. So we do, we kind of, we kind of walk, walk through the steps, and then we, we have those gates open throughout the storm to allow the water to, to move.
I just think they should, we should have more leeway before the storm. You can drive down Trinity Boulevard right now and look at the ponds that I think are associated with Heritage Springs, and they're full, they are always to the top, and, but I, I can tell you, when a big storm is coming, I get calls like crazy from Thousand Oaks residents, please, 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 open the gates.
The good news on that one is we are working with a consultant currently to address the current protocol, the current process of how to operate that gate. So once we have our stuff in line with our consultant, then we can go back to the Water Management District and say, hey, here's what we found through our third-party consultant, and we want to redo the protocol on this. And that's, we're in the middle of doing that.
You know, we don't want to, we don't want to cause any downstream ill effects, we, we get that, but...
Is that good?
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't know if, we may be following their protocol, but do we need to help with their protocol? Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Mariano, and then Commissioner Oakley.
I was, I was before you, but I haven't even finished, I haven't finished my thing yet.
Go ahead.
But, but literally, like you say, the downstream effect, Oak Ridge is downstream, they don't flood no matter what happens.
Never floods.
Because the water goes, and the Reserve now goes good. So I don't think it's a downstream issue with those gates, those things should be open, but the key is going to be to make the water really flow when we need it to, is to get that stuff in Thousand Oaks, into the side of it before Oak Ridge, right before the CV, before the CVS, to clear that conveyance out. If we can clear that conveyance out, that will take care of most everything you've got down there.
We think, anyway, we're not engineers, but we think. Commissioner Oakley.
Just to add on, Thousand Oaks, years ago, when I was at SWIFTMUD chairman and going through all the issues, all your HOAs over around Trinity and that area and Thousand Oaks, they had all these waterways for retention ponds at all, but they never did maintenance.
Maintenance, never.
And they're supposed to do their own maintenance, and somehow, and of course, SWIFTMUD gave them the advice and who to contact, to clean some of those lily pads and all that kind of thing up in some of those areas, but they were always late in keeping those clean. Somehow, if there's a way we can keep them doing what they're supposed to do on their side, it makes your job easier.
It sounds like that's what you've done, is...
I think that's been an issue, well, it's been back that time.
It was recognized by the legislature, by us, and that's what called for the changes in the ERP rules. But the obligation is still up to the entity who holds the stormwater permit to do that. So what it does...
Is either you should make them move...
It reinforced the, the reporting requirements, and it also made them identify costs with certain systems so that they have the money available to continue to do these things.
I have a question, because we're trying to build a database on HOAs and CDD, you know, districts in the county, so where do you get your information from?
They report it to us now.
Well, maybe we get the list from you, instead of trying to figure out how to...
Well, anywhere we've, we've issued a permit, those permits are available to the public.
So HOA boards change, they may not have a management company, so you send it to...
They send us the report, they're required to send us, and then when they don't, it flags.
Do you ever have issues trying to find out who's in charge of a certain neighborhood?
It's part of the process, I'm sure.
I, I mean, I would be very, I'm going to talk with you offline to figure this out, because we've been trying to build a database, and maybe you're the...
Yeah, we can put, I brought a ton of staff here to data to get into the weeds, if you would like to.
Because we want to be able to communicate this stuff as well, and... And we hold, you know, at least in my district, which is where a lot of flooding happens, I have quarterly meetings with HOA leaders, and I think this is really important information to get out.
Agreed.
So, where we have a problem is they are required to file with Department of State, Department of State Division of Corporations and file that paperwork. Sometimes they do not update their information.
Right.
By the state, but that's where they are required to set up their HOA, this Division of Corporations.
I'm just saying, you know what I'm talking about, yeah, because his office has also been trying to put together this database. Okay, anything else on this one? Okay, so we will move on, and he's going to, you're going to give a report, Brian?
Yes. We're saving the best for last.
Okay, so we, I'm sure we'll have more questions for you. All right, now we have, I think we have ten, Peg Department.
Yes, Plan Department, David Engel.
Good morning, David Engel, Planning and Economic Development Director.
That is not our slideshow.
It is.
It is, okay.
I know.
Okay, sorry about that. We have a triad defense against stormwater, negative stormwater impacts here in the state, county, and region. The triad is, is the Planning and Development Department plus Building and Construction Services manage the onsite development regarding stormwater and other types of infrastructure regulation. The second level is Jason Nichols' group, Public Works, that looks at the systemic impacts of stormwater discharges on their infrastructure here in the county. And thirdly, there's our state partners at SWF MUD and FDOT, which we collaborate and work together strategically on a regular basis. Back in 2022, the county initiated a collaboration effort to have Public Works, Planning and Development work together not to overlap each other's jurisdiction in a coordinated fashion, and we also had input from SWF MUD, and, and it became a, a way that we had process development going forward. In February of '23, we started instituting our coordinated strategy here in our department. I'm sorry. Two-handed thing. I need to page three, please. Thank you, I, I'm sorry about that. So, our life is governed by chapter, chapter 900 of the Land Development Code. The Land Development Code focuses on a number of things in that chapter. Number one, it focuses on site design, grading, building locations relative to stormwater management infrastructure, and then it leads out into the overall development into a stormwater management and retention system. There's three types of review intensities in Planning and Development. First is a compliance review to make sure all of the administrative requirements are included in a land development application. Second phase is mass grading reviews, where we look at the, the macro site grading and drainage, once we disturb a piece of property, and lastly, the full development review, which is the actual site plan, and this is the most comprehensive and detailed review that we undertake. The goal of chapter 900 is to ensure that the post-development does not cause any irreparable harm or unintended consequences to the, to the drainage basin and also the adjacent properties. And for projects delineated in the, in the floodplain management area, we have multiple certified floodplain managers at Planning and Development and Building and Construction Services that work on phased mitigation during the construction process. The BCC may adopt a more stringent special design standard for any drainage basin here in the county. There are primarily two different types of stormwater basins. One is the open basin, that's a basin that interconnects with, with adjacent basins, and we require that the, the capacity to hold back stormwater aligns to the 25-year storm event. Then we have pre-development flow rates, that's the rate that water leaves a site, and we want to make sure that the pre and post-development up to the 25-year storm is accommodated. The, the second type of basin is closed basins, these are isolated basins that don't have any type of contiguous discharge opportunity. So, our stormwater management and mitigation policies are much more stringent up to the 100-year storm event. We also, in particular, have basins of special concern. There's three of them now designated in the county. If you went to chapter 900, you'd see the stormwater areas delineated in the ordinance. One is East Zephyr Hills Area Basin, the second is Tank Lake up in the Dade City area, and we spoke about that today, and thirdly, it's Timber Oaks, and that's centered around Jasmine and Little, and it, it also involves the Magnolia area. So, those are the three concerns, and we perhaps may have additional areas of concern from the stormwater mapping that we had as a result of the hurricanes. So, basically, open basins are, are regulated to the 25-year storm event, closed basins to 100, and then anything in and around floodplain areas, the phasing of infrastructure has to be concurrent with the development of the property. We just don't wait until the storm, until the stormwater catches up with the development, so it's phased and staged, and it's managed very closely from one, by one of our certified floodplain managers. And that's my presentation, sorry for the choppiness, is there any questions?
Commissioner Mariano, Commissioner Oakley, you want to speak to her?
David, you've talked about it, and we've talked about it with staff as well, when I look at, as Commissioner Oakley pointed out, sometimes you have development builds five feet up, the guy decided down the bottom, they're going to get hit. We had that one in Crowler Estates that came up, that we had this property that was originally designed for 10 acre lots all the way around, big properties, and then it could all condensed in. And we put an access road.
What does that mean, condensed in?
It gave more density, now there's like 160 homes. So, the more density coming in, everything's elevated up, I mean elevated up with retaining walls, et cetera. The retention pond is in the bottom part, it's sitting right next to a property where it's sitting in the bottom of that basin right there, and when that big storm comes in and all that rainwater goes in, as it filters through the other ponds that are there, those people at the bottom are in trouble. Plus the fact that we took an easement and let them drive in. I worry about what we have in place, is it enough? How do we allow these developments to come where you're actually going to fill in a basin for a road, which is going to like dissect it more? And not that I necessarily want to go to the basin of special concern requirements, but we definitely need to step it up a bit to what we can do to protect the people from holding more water, because even if you hold it to these storm events, if you get a bigger storm, they're done.
So, there is a cost to going to a different, you know, 100-year, 200-year, 300-year event, but I'm wondering, is the 100-year level, has it ever been looked at, and is that correct for today's rain events? I mean, is the 100-year still, when was that, when were those levels decided, and did that need to shift some?
So, you can imagine I've had an opportunity to discuss these things in 16 counties with a lot of folks. And the one thing I find most important is people do not understand 1 in 25, 1 in 100. Most people think that's a temporal thing. You'll get a storm like this once every 100 years. That's completely incorrect.
It's 1% of the world.
It's a percentage, right? It is a, so, for instance, when you design something to a 1 in 25-year storm, that means you have a 4% chance every year that that design will fail. When you design something to a 1 in 100-year storm, that means you have a 1% chance every year that that system, your road, could fail.
That's pretty good, pretty good odds.
So, most people would take a 99% chance.
Yeah.
But you're, you, you talk about the cost.
But has that number, but has that, that, what's the word?
Maybe Brian.
Has that shifted?
Well, I was going to say, is the 1%, is the 1% storm still the 1% storm?
Yes, is it now the 5% storm?
So, every time, and you were talking, it's, it will move. Every time there's a storm, we, like these, we have a team that will go out and document what we call high water levels. That information is put into the models to improve those models. So, yes, that will change. Does it change significantly with each storm? No, it doesn't.
But how, how often, and is this the Army Corps that does this? How often is that number adjusted to the new reality? For example, Thousand Oaks, we had had a drought, and we had had a lot of pumping here, and so the water table, you know, was down a lot, and so that became the new normal, and it was able to reset, right, for Thousand Oaks, that they could fill to a lower level because that was the new normal, the new level for them. And then we realized, when the pumping stopped, or got, you know, when we had Tampa Bay water, the, the levels came back up, and Thousand Oaks was just caught in that little time warp. So, does the 100-year level need to be adjusted?
So, let me explain to you how this all gets put together, right? We spend a lot of money on basin management plans, right? And what would happen is we've taken all this data we've collected, and we work with a cooperator, the county, we're in the middle of one, another one right now for you folks, and we do these maps, and we take all the data, the most recent data we had, so this would be incorporated into the new map. And the map says, at a 1 in 25-year storm, this is who would flood. At a 1 in 100-year storm, this is who, at a 1 in 500, this is who would flood. And we, as the technical support, that's one of our roles, working with the county and building these maps, hand them back to you. And your staff is charged to coming with you and saying, what do you want to do? Do you want to build to a 1 in 100 at a 1% chance? Or do you want to build to a 1 in 200 at a .5, or a 1 in 500 at a .02% chance that this place is going to flood? And mostly, everybody say, yeah, let's build it to be super safe. Well, if you go from 1 in 100, you know, you're cutting your development down in half. So, if you've got 50 homes, now you're going to be able to build 25, right? And you think, okay, why not? Well, if you can only build 25 homes, you've just doubled the price of homes in your community. A road, if you want to build a road to a 1 in 500-year storm, you're quadrupling the price of the cost of your road. So, there has to be a balance. That decision is based on your communities, the district here is to provide the data to show you, here's, here's the options to what you want to build to.
I got that, but what I'm asking you is how often do you, does your data ever change?
Every day. We collect data every day on levels.
So, so it, every year's amount of rainfall goes in, and it adjusts?
We have the ability to adjust the model. When do you, when we change the maps is when the counties, cities, and municipalities come to us and say, we, we think we should do another watershed management. Or we'll approach them and say, you may want to do another watershed management study.
So, so the 25-year flood event level, say for the surface of a road 15 years ago or 30 years ago, is the same as it is today, or it's?
It changed.
It's changed, okay.
Based on the data we've collected, yeah.
Right. Commissioner Mariano, yeah?
So, it, I, I hear your point as far as it's going to shrink, let's say, your density between the storm. When I look at what happens to the people who sided, maybe they're now in a floodplain they weren't before, the effect that's there. It may not increase the price of the housing so much, but it may devalue the land that's now going to get sold because you can't get the density. So, it's not just one way, it could be the other way, depending how the negotiations go.
The safer you want to be will be more costly. Same with a reservoir, you know, I've, believe me, I've got a lot of options where to put reservoirs. And I can tell you, 30 years in the business, the best place to put a reservoir is the end of a river, because that's where you have the most opportunity to fill it the most often. Even at the end of the rivers, the bypass canal, the Hillsborough River, the Alefire River, Tampa Bay water can't fill that every, there's drought years, right? So, when people talk to me, hey, why don't I put a reservoir in East Pasco, or, well, you're going to spend hundreds of millions of dollars on infrastructure that you might fill once every 10 years, or once every 50 years. That is the kind of evaluation that folks put into in doing reservoirs and rivers. It's a supply issue and a timing of how often that supply is going to be available.
We have a reservoir where it's at right now, we have one nearby, and we're looking at it as a future water source, but where we've got it right now, if we build one next door to it, we can collect a lot of water throughout the year based on the rainfall. And when Debbie came along, a lot of people didn't think about it, but Zephyr Hills got flooded, it was only 12 inches of rain, but a lot of water started coming, and we started filling up reservoir with that water going down through Hillsborough and different avenues.
You're talking about the reservoir in Hillsborough?
Yeah, that's, our 15.5 billion is full.
That came from Zephyr Hills water?
So.
No, no, Hillsborough River and all, we collect water that goes in the reservoir.
Right, right, I, I was on the board when we booked that thing.
Yeah, but I mean, that, we're looking at a project in the future of putting another reservoir, and we have the land available right near that reservoir, and that's an ideal place to put it. If we had that reservoir, our second reservoir there, we would actually, now with all the rainfall and all we got that came down to that area, we could have built another reservoir.
Yeah, and the question is, how often? So, if I'm in Mike's shoes or Jason's shoes, I'm going to take all the data and, and come to you and tell you, this reservoir is going to cost X, and I'm going to be able to fill it with X this many times a decade or a year, and you, and you're going to make the responsible decision to decide if that is a good decision for your constituents.
It's a lot of money.
It's, this storm, this storm, you, you will hear, and I've heard all over the district, I've lived here so many years, I've never seen this, that water was never here. Well, my folks tell me that the Witlicucho where you're talking about hasn't looked like that since 1930. So, if you weren't here in 19, that is true, you will have never seen a storm like this. So, that, that is not uncommon, but these decisions have to be based in the data that was collected.
Right.
And the costs associated with that. The district provides the data, we provide the maps, we provide the science, the decision, how to build it, how safe you want to be, is yours.
Okay, and then, what's the, I don't have, I don't, I don't have a list of how we're proceeding, so who is going after?
We'll, we'll have Mark speak next, but if we're done with David, but I'd just use that.
Okay, I just, I wish I had a list of, do you have it?
If I may, chair, real quick.
And then I'll.
Did I? No. So, so to the river point, I, I agree with, somehow you've got to get the water to go. And when I talk about that basin of special concern area, where water is actually to the north flows down through, there's like one pond there that actually gets magnificent when it gets full.
Thank you.
Sometimes it's low, whatever, so it does hold. Downstream from that is where I'm talking about, where you can actually go, where water does flow, it does go to a point, so it actually, as long as it flows that way. But the other thing, and I don't even know, but if there's the Witlicucho River, half a mile outside its banks, if there's some way to put some type of bypass canal to a reservoir, so when it does hit a point like that, it can take and collect in there, it should be an easy flow, easy go, and if you can hold that water, so we can use the water source later, great, but at least the flood prevention part could be huge.
Again, the data will support, you know, what the decision should be. The Witlicucho went about a mile outside its banks, right? So, it was an extraordinary event that we haven't seen since 1930. I don't know the, why we put reservoirs at the bottom of rivers, because we have the most opportunity to capture water for water supply. But if that event happened, the last time we seen levels like that was in 1930, the question is, would I build a reservoir for something that happened in 1930? I don't know, the answer could be yes, it could be no, until the data and the information is synthesized to make, is it a good idea? It's an idea one folks should look at, but, you know, the technical side is the easiest part, it's the, it's the decision what to do next. You know, they say problems are emotional, solutions are technical, and, and decisions are political, and that's basically how each one of these things work out.
So, some of you may recall, and I'm sorry Lisa's not here, but she's, she is on her way, that there was a plan to study holding back the Angla River and holding the water on the 4,000 acres that the state bought to mitigate for the Sun Coast from our family. And the Army Corps took a good, hard look at it, and the, the, the end result was that the cost of building that. And the, the, the end result was that the cost of building that system, I don't remember what it was called, um, to hold back the water, uh, for, that would protect the Trinity area was so much more than just buying out the three or four houses that get water in the houses during a large rate event. Unfortunately, and maybe there, you know, we, I thought, I think we did get some calls after the last storm.
We did.
But, but, you know, sometimes you have to look at, um, which one makes more sense before you go spend a lot of money. And, and I was in the helicopter with the Army Corps Colonel flying around doing, going down the Anclot River and looking at all that. And that, and they did a big study and that's what they, they came up with on that one, so. Brian, were you around when, when they did that one? Were you there?
Been here since nineteen seventy.
I thought so. You weren't, I think David was the head, the head then.
That's when he took over.
It was a while ago, but.
What I gather from what you said, would we build for something that would happen like in the thirties now? If we're not getting that kind of water, it'd be better to choose something else because that's a lot of expense going in. That's why I think the best position for a reservoir is very close to the one we already have because it's better than not. You've got a lot more water flowing through there that you can fill to a reservoir.
But Commissioner Oakley, that, that's going to capture water for a drought situation, but that's not going to stop people's homes from flooding.
No.
Right?
I understand, but I'm talking about water issue, water supplies too, same thing.
Yeah, you, you got to remember, this was an, an extra special event.
Yeah.
Oh, it is, that's right.
You had Debbie come and, and fill everything, right? Because if, if you.
We flooded from Debbie.
If you remember, we were in a drought. We, we had water restrictions all over the district for watering. Tampa Bay Water's reservoir, you know, we were worried about how are we going to fill that? One storm, we fill a reservoir that is a mile long. Once it's full, they don't take any more water either. So you, you don't want to design a reservoir for an event because you're going to fill it really quickly and people are still going to flood and they're going to say, what happened?
Yeah.
So it, it's just really a balance that has to be data driven in making these decisions. And that's what, you know, we're trying to do is provide that data for, for these decisions to be made.
Yeah, so it'd be interesting, I, I, um, uh, Office of Strategy and Sustainability is going next. But I mean, is there a way to help a closed basin, some of these basins in large rain events? That is cost effective?
Part of what we're talking about is, I was talking about water basin. I, I actually went from taking care of stormwater to water supply. But the fact of it is like Tank Lake on the east side of the county. Morning Side Drive, I believe the opportunity of building Morning Side Drive through that area, behind the hospital and Tank Lake, is an area that you could stop homes from being flooded in that area by building that road in and fixing the canal that goes on out to the river. Except when you have this kind of an event where that water from the river comes across 301 back in there. That's the only issue that you'd have, but that's, I don't know, I mean, if you want in two hundred years, you're there, yeah, about, one percent chance of a hundred year flood plain.
Thank you.
It's only one percent every year, but that can happen every year, more than once, really.
Please God, no, but, yes. The, so we do have a flood detention area. We do have what you guys are talking about. How about a big area to store water? To give you an idea, most of you may be familiar if you travel from Pasco to Hillsborough, Morse Bridge Road, right? And everybody gets really excited when I use the flood detention area because I, I shut down Morse Bridge Road. I put it underwater to store water in the Hillsborough River flood detention area. That was full. And to give you an idea of the size of what we're talking about, that's twenty-six square miles that I fill with water in an event like this. And I still have to shut down Morse Bridge Road. Wh- when you talk about these large events and large systems like the bypass canal, you're, you're talking about twenty-seven square miles. You're talking about, you know, ten, twelve billion dollar investment to try and duplicate something like that.
Yeah, it's cheaper to buy the people out.
We've asked, we've asked. We've asked the Army Corps to help us finish part of that project to take water. The, the original canal that was designed takes water off the lake, the Notice Ass area. We have that ask in, we have an ask in to help, uh, finish about eight or nine projects for Pasco County that were identified in the watershed management plan. We're asking, um, but just that, that piece, that canal is two point four billion. We would have to do the eminent domain and it probably costs about a half a billion. So big, these big solutions are huge for, for flood events. Just to give you a perspective on, on what that would look like as far as trying to capture flood events.
And what's so heartbreaking is so many of those people on the east side didn't have any flood insurance. I mean, that's just heartbreaking.
There are so many on the west side that didn't have flood insurance.
Yeah.
Couldn't afford it.
Yeah.
All right, um, let the record reflect that Commissioner Jaeger is here. We've had fun at the dentist this morning, right? Did you have, did you have something?
No, I was actually, if, if, if you want to take over introducing the speakers, it's fine, I was going to move this to.
Oh, you're going to do it? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so, so, Dr. Bellis, I think we've transitioned perfectly to your area.
Yeah, thank you. So the, the, uh, the Office of Strategy and Sustainability was established here by the Board a year ago, January. And it's really to help the county catch up on, on preparing itself for whatever chronic and acute stressors are going to occur today and also into the future, both internally so we can continue to provide levels of service, but also externally looking at all seven hundred and forty square miles of the county. So, Brian, it's interesting, you, you bring up the, the large projects and, and we're all familiar now with the, the Far Rivers Basin project from the late sixties and early seventies. Some of these adaptations cross the, almost the entire county. They're massive, they're gigantic and probably wouldn't make sense to do today. But one of the things we've learned in our group as we've been talking to the community and talking to, uh, our friends in the municipalities and various funders is that because of what happened in these storms, as bad as it was, we now know what we may not have known or had to model in the past. We know what will happen under certain conditions. So if we are not going to build adaptations to try to abate certain areas because it doesn't make sense financially to do, we can begin to educate people. We can let them know how to get out of harm's way and what that looks like. I think, Brian, you made, made the, the, the Withlacoochee River was so far out of its banks. If we even look at policy, it, it looks like over time, the, uh, the setback for that river has gotten smaller and smaller just over time because they hadn't flooded. So looking at those kind of things. So part of what we're doing in our group too is we're looking at how to revisit projects that have been on the table for a while, but, but maybe ran into a roadblock. Might have been permitting, might have been funding, might have been whatever. But pulling the right people to the table, stakeholders, the funders, the departments, municipalities, to complete some of these big projects that we know will make a difference. Maggie Valley is a great example because you literally could put a park in there that becomes floodable if needed. So there's a property there. So we're, we're talking to the various departments to see if we can make that happen. Sea Pines is another one. The other piece that we're looking at too is making sure that we're all speaking the same language across the county, across organizations and across funders. We, uh, we are very happy that, that SWIFTMUD is, is, uh, working with us as we pull the core back in here to do some other assessments around the county to get a, an idea of where do we stand now? This was again, back in the nineteen sixties. We probably have built over a lot of that and most of it's not dual, but what, where are we now? And what makes sense to do? We're also looking at the coastline. We have USF coming in to do a, an assessment of the entire coastline, brand new measurements, brand new, uh, buoys off the coast so we get good information. And then start looking at the projects that, that make sense for us to do over time. So that's really what, what our office at OSS is, is to do.
Great. Um, any questions for Dr. Bellis? Okay, um, and now we have Andy.
Yes, yes, ma'am. I'm going to go ahead and stand up and, and do this, I prefer, I, because I'm a walker and talker. Basically, there were some, uh, questions and concerns about, um, our NFIP program and the CRS community rating system and why is the county participating in it? So I met with my team, I sat with Eric Breitenbach, we had a conversation and I put together a, a little PowerPoint that shows the pros and cons of participating in the program. So basically, in overview, um, this program was created by Congress to mitigate future flood loss in the country. Uh, they recognized that people were flooding out and they were finding out that people did not have flood insurance. Primary source of flood insurance coverage for residential properties in the United States provides access to government-backed, affordable, uh, flood insurance policies. So I'm going to touch off of that right there. So day before yesterday, I received an email that, um, as of right now, when you give flood insurance, you have to pay it upfront, done, it's a lump sum. FEMA is now working on the NFIP program, so it's going to become a monthly charge. Instead of the homeowner being dumped on all of it, it's going to be broken down in month, in the monthly payments. And it acts in the forces floodplain management regulations designed to minimize damage and losses due to flooding. That's what I work with Jason's group for, JP Murphy's group, um, we all work together on that. Um, and it ensures disaster recovery funding is available to citizens after a qualifying flooding event. So that ensures that people are going to get some kind of aid, whether it be individual assistance, whether it be a small business loan, um, other programs that come through the county, HMGP, FMA, Swift Current, uh, all those programs that we can utilize to help the homeowner and business. All sixty-seven counties in Florida participate in the NFIP program. I believe there's only nine little city municipalities that they jump in and jump out, but all sixty-seven counties do participate in this program. Pasco County, we joined it, NFIP, in November of nineteen eighty-one. The NFAP has a CRS system incentive program that's based into it. It's for community floodplain management activities that exceed the minimum NFIP requirements. And that's our ordinances and our, our other things that we do, uh, teaching, education, um, notification, all those things that go above the base of NFIP, we get extra points for, and that's what brings our scores down.
When you say scores down, you mean our rates down?
Our rates down and the score. So NFIP, and yet, and NFIP CRS program, you have a rating of one to nine. The lower that number is, the better we are, off we are. So we want last year, as you know, from a five to a four. So that improves and gives a larger increase, I mean, decrease in the flood insurance. It gives a percentage off. NFIP communities that participate in the CRS can get reduced flood insurance premiums for property owners up to forty-five percent. Right now, we're sitting at a twenty-five percent level. We applied and opted in CRS back in December thirteen in nineteen ninety-one and again in October of nineteen ninety-two. Property owners required to apply insurance then automatically started receiving a five percent discount on their premiums. Today, we're up at twenty-five percent on the premiums and it results in about a three point nine million dollar savings to the county, to the citizens. We have a current rating as a five, as I said, we're working towards a four. And I will tell you, getting these scores lower and lower are, are extremely difficult. It, it's a point-based system. There's about, probably about a hundred activities that could be done. And to mitigate all these activities is extremely time consuming and long and takes the work of not only the board, but the county and other departments within the county. Forty-five percent of the county is in a special flood hazard zone by acreage. Areas assessed to have a higher risk for flooding impacts. That's our coastal areas, that's anybody on the rivers and, and things like that. Property owners located in special flood hazard zone are required to purchase flood insurance if they have a mortgage from a federally regulated or insurance li- insurance lender. So they are forced to have that insurance. Approximately forty percent of Pasco's NFIP, NFIB flood insurance claims come from properties outside of the special flood hazard area. And that's the areas like we just dealt with, Silver Oaks, Hickory Hills, all those closed basin areas. It behooves them to have flood insurance, but as of right now, we all know, it's, it's very expensive and people can't afford it.
I, I thought if you weren't in a flood zone and you got flood insurance, it was a lot less. Like my neighbor in Aristida has it, it's four hundred dollars a year.
I, I, I do not know that answer for that. Yes, ma'am?
I think, sorry.
Go ahead.
I think it's your covered, if you have citizens, you have to have flood.
With citizens, that's a federally regulated program, correct? CRS program participation financially incentivized flood insurance for those not required to have it, but remain vulnerable. So it gives them that discount. And I know when people look at their insurance bill and it says CRS discount and it says eleven dollars. That's not the whole picture being painted. That's just part of, that's just a little CRS portion. You're getting that twenty-five percent discount, but what's going back to CRS is eleven dollars of that money. So you're still getting that twenty-five percent discount.
Well, that's misleading then.
It, it's very, yeah, it's very hard to understand. You're still getting the full amount. Okay, so consequences of non-participation in the program. NFIP back flood insurance will not be renewed. And then homeowners in special flood hazard areas will be required to maintain flood insurance.
At the full rate then?
At the full rate and through private entities and whatever it may be. And those are extremely limited and extremely expensive. Financial incentives for property owners outside this special flood hazard area to obtain flood insurance will disappear. They will not be able to find it, they will not be able to get it. Impact to federal grants and loans to Pasco? No federal disaster assistance loans, as, as we better know as SBA. No federal mortgage insurance in special flood hazard areas being FHA, VA, Farmers Home. No Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac, GNMA purchases of mortgages in the secondary market for the special flood hazard area property. We will not be entitled to hazard mitigation assistance, no HMA, FMA, RFC or R, SRL grants. Ineligible for federal mitigation funding for acquisition or construction projects in special flood hazard area, that's including HMGP money. And we've been awarded over twenty-four million between two thousand seventeen and two thousand twenty-one. And we just found out that we got the notica- notification of funding for Debbie from this last storm that Debbie had came through and the county is getting about three point two million dollars in HMGP money for projects. We still have not heard about Helene or Milton. That's supposed to be in March and sometimes they're all weighed with bated breath. No, no mitigation funding for FMA, FMA, Swift Current. These programs were awarded a little under a million dollars a project between two thousand seventeen and two thousand twenty-one.
What's FMA? What's that stand for? Federal Management Area?
I don't remember. Federal mitigation assistance, a little birdie. So residents with houses impacted by the storm serves during Hurricane Helene and Milton will not, would not have received any kind of federal funding assistance, and that's including SBA. To date, Pasco County residents have received a little over a hundred and twenty million dollars in individual assistance alone from Hurricane Milton and Helene. So public assistance, PA, will only provide for the amount of damage that a policy claim would not have paid for. So if county assets or infrastructure was damaged and we made a claim and say it was ninety million dollars and our insurance only covered forty million, we, the federal feds would not cover the remaining money. We'd have to come out of our own pockets for that repair.
And they cover it now?
Yes. So NFIP and CRS status, it can be modified. We can exit, we can leave the program and seek to be reinstated at a later time. However, if we do that and we were to leave and then say go back in five years, once we got reinstated back into the program, any projects or construction or anything built in a special flood hazard area would have to be either A, brought up to code, to that current code then, or B, demolished and then we restart again. So however, like I said, however, non-compliant development has occurred in the community maps flood, special flood hazard area during the time of the community was not participating in the program, the community will be required to remedy all non-compliant developments to the maximum extent possible prior to reinstatement of the program. So it would, it would hurt dramatically. And with that, I am done. Any questions?
Yes, because I know there was talk about maybe not participating in this plan, which I think is fiscally scary. So, um, any questions on, on the insurance plan, Commissioner Waitman?
I do. So what I'm hearing is the program benefits the county body. that the taxpayers pay for. But the taxpayer themselves, with the thousands of people, three-point-nine million bucks is chump change. You know, that's nothing with the volume of people that we have. And my, my concern with being in this program, so when it comes to each individual person, taxpayer, and their property, they're flooded out, and if they're deemed their home is totaled, and they take the payout from their insurance company, but they gets the minimus, and then because we're part of this program, they can't rebuild their house, even, and it's gonna cost them double or triple to rebuild their house because of these rules. But they take a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar payout or whatever, and they can remodel or rebuild their home for, say, three-fifty, they find the delta of a hundred grand to rebuild their house, they can't do that. And this program prevents, the way I understand it, prevents that homeowner from rebuilding in a more equitable and feasible way for those who may not have the means to do so. So I'm kinda understanding this as a double-edged sword. Well, it benefits the county and its infrastructure plan, which the taxpayers ultimately pay for. The individual taxpayer and property owner, if a storm event happens to them, they're kinda on the short end of the stick, the way I understand it financially, because also the insurance costs and pays, it doesn't cover inflationary measures either. So the cost of drywall may cost double or triple. So I'm having a hard time. I see, I understand the pros and cons, but I'm having a hard time understanding if when you look at the individual resident component of being a part of this plan, to helping someone rebuild their home, or they just ultimately sell a lot, their lot, and they take a loss. What's the decision here? What's that worth? And I understand, you know, our side, what we're responsible for, but we don't exist without our residents, our property owners, and taxable value. So I'm kinda like, well, do we take the hit and figure it out through different ways of taxing authority that this government has to rebuild? And it allows those residents to rebuild their home, stay in their home in a more equitable, feasible way? Or if we stay in this program, that continues happens, they take a massive loss, they have to move their whole life because they can't afford to rebuild, because it costs two or three times, and they take whatever they can get out of their property and they move on. So I don't necessarily like that, but I'm trying to wrap my head around what all this means, because there's two very different pieces to being a part of this.
Yes, sir, I agree a hundred percent. But there are programs out there too, that the residents can apply for to have their houses either bought out and demolished, or B, reconstructed and elevated. We have those programs.
That's the kicker. If they're, if would not be a part of this, and the government deems their home unadmissible, and you have to tear it out, it completely
Removes us from that.
Takes their decision away from them, their ability to make their insurance claim, and whatever money they can find up to remodel their home the way that it is. And for a lot of folks, that might be the most economical way to get back into their home and own a piece of property within a ninety-year storm event. Other than that, their options for a lot of them are just to sell, take whatever money they can get out of it, and who knows where they're going. And then they're upside down on a very expensive property in a world that they may not even want to live in. And that decision they make is because of this government's decision to participate in this program, which has a direct economic impact to their life in a potentially negative way.
I understand that.
That's something that I take very seriously, and I'm trying to weigh what's the best decision here. I understand all the consequences of exiting it, but the taxpayers are gonna fund this government anyway.
And I think, Commissioner, it's a combination, right? I mean, you even look at mortgages and secondary markets, there's still private investment, right? And I think participating in the program, one of the good things that can happen, at least for the individual, and I understand what you're saying for the individual, is the existence of programs where we can put money back in. You know, if Jeff owns a property and he's in a certain limited income bracket, as Andy points out, it opens up a stream of funding that allows his property to hopefully come into compliance, be safer. I mean, the simple fact of the matter is, is that we do see, and you can look at this down in Ian, is that properties that are brought up to current codes, properties that are out, they, they're fine.
They were absolutely fine.
And so really, the kicker is, is how do we get individuals, you know, to, to, you know, be incentivized to kick it up? I understand government involvement in this, but the private, private loan markets are involved in this as well. They, they make investments in these people's properties by the simple virtue of giving them a loan, you know? And that, that's all part of it. I mean, I, you know, we can have conversations on greater good, or what is that? But, but overall, I think the program does sort of lift the entire county up versus, you know, and sometimes it does, it may not be what you want to do as an individual, but sometimes it's the right thing to do, and we at least bring resources to bear to help those folks get there. I'm not saying it works out for everybody the right way, but it's dicey. And as we get more storms, and as we get more, more things, these are conversations that, they're tough conversations to have in a lot of cases. And, you know, I know I can't provide direct solace to your concerns. I understand exactly what you're, what you're getting at there, but there's, there's more moving parts to it than what Pasco County can play into it as well, I would say.
Now, the SBA loan, these people should take a look at that, right? Because the SBA loan is up to five-hundred thousand at two percent interest.
Two percent, and then you can actually
Definitely need to help them with that.
You can actually do your reconstruction elevation, whatever they're choosing to do. And what their previous mortgage was, they can wrap up into that loan as well. There are many, many programs out there, and my biggest fear is, me being an EM director, if this program was to go away, we're gonna lose federal funding for infrastructure projects, we're gonna lose federal funding, federal loans, for homeowners to buy houses and get insurance. So I understand we got forty percent of the people in the special flood hazard area, but we also have sixty more percent of the county that's gonna lose all of that money. And it's gonna hurt more than anything, it's gonna do more damage than I think that it would do good.
And the cleanup cost?
Well, that too, as Andy points out, the, the, the public assistance, I mean, certainly that would have come. We were already at a fifty-million-dollar bill for storm cleanup.
So don't think of three-point-nine, you gotta look at fifty million dollars of cleaning.
So yes, I mean, they, they, they hold that stick.
Yeah, but I can't imagine the Fed leaving any, well, North Carolina's example, leaving you just hanging out, just driving.
Commissioner Mariano, then Commissioner Jaeger, when Commissioner Waitman?
I'm done.
Andy, what was done with the three-point mil, three-point-nine million? What kind of things were done?
That goes into the program, and it gets doubled, lost my wording.
That goes to the, that goes to the insurance payer, right?
Right, it goes back to the citizens, yeah.
All right, so let me ask this. When we look at all the flooding that happened, and I can talk more to the coast more than inland, but I don't know that many more homes that had more than, let's say, four feet of water. Would you say that that would take about like ninety, ninety-five percent of the homes had less four feet or less of water in them?
I had two inches.
Maybe Mr. Murphy could probably answer that question.
Here, I'll bring it to you.
JP Murphy, Director of Building Construction Services. So we don't have a number based off of, you know, foot, if you will. Of the thirteen thousand properties that we've inspected, only two thousand are substantially damaged. The general rule that we follow is, an Army Corps of Engineers rule is, one foot of water in a mobile home is substantially damaged. Three foot of water in a single-family structure constitutes substantial damage. So anything above those generally means for those structure types, we're gonna see more than that forty-nine, fifty percent of damage in a, in a structure.
Well, you make that point, but let's go back to Senate Manor, when we had people initially get rated over forty-nine percent. Once they had an appraisal done, all of a sudden, most of those homes were under, not all of them. The back roads were a little bit higher, where they had more than four feet, but the ones in the front, you know, under four feet, whatever, a lot of those are getting rebuilt because they were still under forty-nine percent because of the appraisal.
Correct.
All right, so if it's two percent
Are those mobile homes?
Yes.
Yeah, they're all manufactured homes.
So it's two percent that you figure is substantially damaged, so that's probably close to that number. If we were gonna look at, and I, and I look at, sometimes we've raised in these homes for two-hundred-and-fifty, three-hundred-thousand dollars. They're fifty years old, they got a base. You're gonna move them way up, they gotta go put an elevator in, and you still got old hurricane buildings that are up there that aren't protected like the new ones are. I'm not crazy about that move, plus the expense. I've talked to a gentleman who does mobile home raising all over, all over the nation, and he can get to like, I think, forty-two hundred, forty-two inches for about thirty-five-hundred dollars for a mobile. If you took every bit of mobiles that we saw, and anyone that's up and down Senate Manor, Signal Cove, et cetera, the trash that was out there, the collection that was done, if they were just up four feet, we would have had probably one-tenth, or one-fifth, I mean, one, a small fraction of damage compared to what we went through. Can we do mitigation to go take a look at doing the raising of these homes, not only just the single-family homes, but also the mobiles, manufactured homes coming in?
Yeah, the current law states that the base flood elevation, or the floor elevate, base floor elevation needs to be above the design flood stage.
And one foot of freeboard, right?
Are you talking about the base flood elevation?
Correct, so let's say, if that area had a base flood elevation of four foot, and you add your one foot of freeboard, you get to a design flood elevation of five foot, the bottom floor, basically the sub-member of the flooring system, would need to be above that five foot in order to be compliant with both the local ordinance as well as the federal law.
All right, so if those areas like four or five feet above sea level, you're talking about raising them up at least eight feet, nine feet.
Yeah, I mean, we have some areas where the design flood elevation is thirteen foot.
I'm sorry, they shouldn't, they, we, they gotta get out of it.
All right, but here's the thing.
It's just repetitive loss to the taxpayers all the time.
Think about a mobile home that you now want to raise up.
I don't, I want, I don't want a mobile home in there personally.
Let me finish, I'm talking to everybody here. So if you take that mobile home and you raise it up to above the base flood elevation, and I don't know about anybody else in the room, but I don't want to be in that structure during any wind,
Right.
or have my stuff in there in any wind, because it's much more vulnerable to that higher level with the wind up to that high. Maybe it's safer from the flood, but I'm in danger. Same thing with a home that's that old, that's been lifted up. What I think is better for us, and for those that want to tear down and go, they can, funding, they can make it work. All of a sudden, they got a home that they didn't have a note on, and now they're paid off, and now they're gonna take on four-hundred-thousand dollars' worth of new house that they gotta raise up, they can't afford it anymore, they gotta go. I get people who want to stay in the neighborhoods, I want to help them. And I think if I had these flexibility to go raise things up about four to five feet, now I don't need an elevator, they can go up. And for this storm event, we'd have had minimal damage everywhere. So I understand the logic of the BFV, especially with the modern structure, but if I'm trying to keep people in their homes, which I think is what we want to do as well, and I know they want to stay in it, what, can we look at doing something like that?
I think what you're talking about is similar to the conversation earlier in the workshop about the hundred-year storm event. Where you're talking about, can you mitigate, how much risk can you mitigate ultimately if that, we have another round of bad storms like we had, that elevating it only forty-two feet probably doesn't secure that structure, but for most of the storms we've seen over the past twenty years, it probably does. And so I think what you're suggesting is, can we moderate the law in some way to allow for that mitigation to exist, understanding that you still have risk that is existing in the special flood hazard area? I think my answer to that is, under the federal laws, probably not. Particularly if we're gonna be a member of NFIP.
What about state?
I think it's the same thing, they basically all mirror each other.
So you can get rid of the additional foot of freeboard.
That's in the Florida Building Code now.
The additional foot of freeboard? Okay, that used to be a local requirement, so.
Yeah, that changed in the last, in the eighth edition, they added, actually, I think it changed a few years before that too.
President Trump's probably getting rid of FEMA, and some of these rules that are in place right now are just brutal and don't make a lot of sense. I mean, literally, to put a mobile home up to above the base flood elevation, it just, it's so vulnerable up there. Same thing with an older home. But if I just wanted to give people a way to stay in their homes, et cetera, and, you know, keep them where they want to be in the neighborhoods, I mean, their kids grow up there, families grow up there, Senate Manor, where we saw four generations, three generations there, all going in, they want to stay, they want to stay in their home, let's try to maybe work with the feds to say, let us go, at least raise these up partially, where I don't have to like, I can absorb a lot more cost, and probably take away all the, all the fifty million dollars' worth of cleanup, minimize that to next to nothing.
I have a question.
Commissioner Mariano's point, my concern is to exactly that. This board creating policies for one-in-a-hundred-year storm events, that literally forces generational people out of homes, homes that may be paid off. They understand the risk, they know where they live, and it completely erodes away their choice of where they want to live or, you know, whatever their circumstance is, and that's government talent pushing them out. And I think that's wrong. So I don't know what the hybrid situation is here, but I don't want to be on the side of making a decision that's gonna, you know, force people out of home because of, you know.
Commissioner Jaeger, and then me.
I have a question. Did we ever find out if the county would tear down those mobile homes that they cannot go back into? So let's say it needs to be wiped away, because at one point you said, yes, we could do that, and then I heard from somebody else that we can't do it because it has a hitch. But if, once they move it, if it falls apart, like, so can we move it for free? And let's say they get some money for FEMA, and they do want to stay in that community and raise it and put a different structure on it?
So there's a couple of programs that we think this, that we could do this under. However, having some conversation to remove some of the additional obstacles is, do we just, as a county, just fund some of these early demos, because on the FEMA PA or damage assessment or debris clearing side, it has to be a risk of imminent failure, it has to be a public risk, and that seems to be how you define that, seems to be a sticking point. So we've identified, well, look, we think that removing these structures that are substantially damaged is in the best interest of the public. It does allow people to rebuild or place back in a way that it's either elevated or a different type of structure. I think where there's a program you can fund to do that, and I think we have resources to be able to do that, of course.
So as of right now, if, like, can we take someone's mobile home and demolish it if it's completely?
If you give me the appropriations authority, yes. Otherwise, if it's not at risk of being, of basically falling and being a hazard to public, the answer to that is, it's not reimbursable.
Okay, and who determines if it's?
An engineer, of which we have one on staff as our deputy.
And that's free?
Correct.
And then my second question was for Andy. When you were talking about the loan, so let's say somebody owes three-hundred thousand on their house, and their rate is four-point-three. Now, when they do the SBA loan to help rebuild up to five-hundred, you're rolling that three-hundred, are you getting it at the two percent rate?
That's a great deal.
Yeah.
We need to educate our residents on that.
It's, it's hard to explain. I'd have to sit down with pen and paper and show you how the program works. Basically, basically you can do your rebuild, you know, acquisition demolition, get the loan, and you're locked into it. The only caveat is to it, when you do that loan through SBA, is that that house has to be maintained, and it has to keep flood insurance on it for its duration. Even if Commissioner Waitman moves out, and Commissioner Oakley moves in, they still have to continue to carry that flood insurance.
But if the home is paid for, can they self-insure?
That I do not know, I don't have.
Because right now, if you own your home, you can self-insure.
But if you make a FEMA claim, then you have to carry flood insurance. And I want to reiterate that, and, you know, Mr. Steinseider and I just had a sidebar, legal term. If you don't live in a special flood hazard area, flood insurance is not that expensive. It's like a couple hundred dollars, four hundred dollars, so I don't think people realize that.
Ten thousand dollars in home sales.
Well, you're in a flood area, you're on a river, yeah. My Aristida house is, no, my boathouse is three thousand dollars, we just got our new one. I don't know, maybe it's because we're of a certain height, that, it's not, to me, for me, I know for other people might be, but for me, that's not so prohibitive. But for, I know that my neighbor in Aristida, her, she doesn't live in a flood zone, but she feels comfortable carrying insurance, it's four hundred dollars, and she has a, you know, eight-hundred-thousand-dollar house. I don't know if you have any examples?
Again, well, in the old days, don't
Again, the, well, in, in the old days, don't know what current standards are. But if you were in a non-designated flood plain, an X, your flood insurance would, and you chose to carry flood insurance anyway, it was a relatively five hundred dollars. It was a minimal payment.
If you're in a flood zone, you're paying prevailing rate, whether it's pre-firm or.
And, and we're seeing a lot, uh, in fact, we just got the MAP provision last week, um, where zones are changing with our, with the construction and everything. And they had, just had a parcel, I can't remember the exact address, but it went from not being in a flood zone to being in a flood zone now. So we're going to have that dynamic movement all the time. Um, but I want to go back and reiterate one more time that the NFIP, the CRS program, um, even though Commissioner says it does put a, a heartache on some people, but in the big picture, it benefits the county and the citizens. Because if we lose that money and the citizens got to start going to private lenders, private insurers, it's going to make it even more difficult for them to even get a loan now. So that's my biggest, my biggest piece of it.
And Andy, I guess, just, just to reiterate, so, you know, what Commissioner Mariano and Commissioner Waitman, you know, kind of talked about hybrid type things. I mean, if we were to do that currently under, I mean, we're essentially, there's an audit, there'd be an audit from FEMA or something, and we would, I guess, serve some time in the penalty box uh, on, on CRS and have our CRS rating removed or possibly removed from the NGF, NF, what is it, GFIP? National Flood Insurance Program?
Yes.
Um, is, the only lever right now from a policy perspective is, is participation, you're either in or you're out.
Either in or out.
Have communities gone or sought to have discussions with either FEMA or, you know, to, to discuss rules and can there be some, can there be some flexibility in that?
I've spoken with Hillsborough, Pinellas, Hernando, and Polk. And that, they are all steadfast. They are all remaining in the program. They see, there's too much benefit that outweighs.
But, but, but to the other, but to the other point, you know, the five foot versus, you know, maybe we can, we can do better at three. And because the theme here that, that some of the commissioners are pointing out is, is risk, right? There's, there's cost, there's benefit, and there's risk. Um, and, and the rules are very hard set and, and bright lines. Have communities gone and spoken to?
Not that I know of, sir.
Commissioner Mariano.
And what, is it, I think it's been the last, like, eight years they've raised their ra- uh, FEMA's, NFIP's raised, raised about ten, twenty percent a year?
I don't have the facts.
Well, they had a goal to get to, I think, a twenty-five percent increase, and they did it over amount, a number of years.
So, so, so they made it so so many people can't afford it, right, as they go through. I would never propose we try to do this, it would previous FEMA, because they just, you couldn't talk to them, you still can't talk to them after changes up. But right now, with, they're possibly on the way out the door, the way the, the president's talking. I think depending on what takes it over or how they modify it, uh, as they look at, I think you'll see some changes. I think if we could get a, some data on the levels of flooding that we had, was it be three feet, four feet? And what percentage would have been out of, out of the, would have been out of, out of flood? I mean, I, I know there's a one place on Signal Cove, a mobile home, she's right on the canal, right across the Civic Association, that got four feet of water, she got nothing in the house, and just raised up that four feet. So I know that would make a significant difference. I want to get some data together. We're going to go to DC the end of this month, right?
Yeah.
Coming up. Give us a chance to give some data to say, here's the amount of homes if we had allowed people to raise up their, to the four-foot level, here's the amount of flooding we anticipated, to what would happen. And just kind of let's, give us something to go work with to try to put an impact on changing that. Because I know FEMA won't let you do unless you go BFE, you can't even do anything. I think there's better ground, especially what's out there. Otherwise, this is going to keep on going and going.
So Commissioner, if, if, if I, if I may, I think that if, if there is data to support what you're talking about, you're probably better at attacking the maps and not the program. So if actual condition is that those homes didn't get flooded and there was five feet of water, the maps may be wrong for that particular area. And if you brought the flood protection elevation down,
Okay.
you wouldn't, you'd be able to raise the house.
I'd like to look at that for Gulf Harbor.
So instead of being eleven, if we actually brought it down to five, what the number should be, that's, that's a great idea.
We actually went down.
I don't, I mean, that's if the data supports it, I, yeah, but, but.
But that's why they wanted everyone to report the data, and I don't think I did, to mine, to you guys, of what it was at our houses, right? Didn't you, didn't you ask for that?
Yeah, we generally collect that information. We also have it from water lines, from when we did preliminary damage assessment.
Yeah, I'd love for you to do an assessment and see where that is compared to the FEMA level, you know, FEMA flood maps.
You know, the eight feet that's on, or nine feet or whatever it is that's on the, that's on the maps is not necessarily from grade. It's from.
Sea level.
Sea level. So it could be three feet above if you've got.
But that's an important point to, to remember for storm surge, um, which is what affected the west side of the county. Now, on the east side of the county, you kind of have a, an inverted methodology where you have properties that had never got flooded before.
Right.
And all of a sudden with the riverine flooding, we see significant changes in that. So, um, I know that in Pinellas County, uh, some, some while ago, they did a LiDAR overflight of the whole county to kind of reassess elevations throughout the whole county, which did result in some properties coming out of, uh, velocity zones and some properties going in. And, and that may be something we want to look at here too, just to get a ground truthing of what that is. I don't know if that has been done here and now.
I'd like to do that, and I'd also like to look at the limo line. Because we have properties that are protected by barrier islands and coves and everything, but they put them in the limo. And this is a new thing, limited.
Utter wave action.
Yeah. Oh, my gosh, four engineers I have working on that. Um, yeah, so I'd like to see that.
Um, and then one other suggestion that our, our teams were working on is evaluating from a point standpoint, can we drop off the one year for substant- cumulative for substantial damage?
Yeah, so how does that work? Because we know City of Newport Ritchie, who's represented here, has a five-year cumulative. I don't know what Zephyr Hills has. Do you know what you have? No? Um, where one-year cumulative, where does that play into the rating system?
That plays in, if you think of the NFIP, the CRS program, the discount program, is a part of the NFIP. And so that twenty-five percent that Chief Fossa was talking about, elements that we put into our local code and things on how we want to manage our flood plain risks is what drives that, those points, our CRS points. So one of the way we get additional CRS points is by having a one-year cumulative. Now, we can change that one-year cumulative. Some, some communities have zero-year cumulative. You go from one project to the next. And so I'll tell you from personal experience, some communities will even do, you do one year, you get reevaluated, you get a new value. You can use your brand-new value at the close of that permit.
Is that what we do?
And we have a one-year from data issuance of the permit. But you may submit a private appraisal to, to change that value number, you know, to talk to the equation.
I've got a neighbor doing that.
Yeah, talk to the equation, right, is forty-nine percent of a higher number is still a higher number on the forty-nine percent side. Um, but we do think in order to help folks not be in an even worse situation next hurricane season, dropping off the substantial damage cumulative totals may be something that we need to look at. So we're doing the research on that too, but I think that may be coming forward.
Okay, um, Commissioner Waitman, and then Commissioner Mariano.
Is there a way, like you share story, to simplify the CRS rating and what a point it worth to quantify it? I mean, it obviously, it obviously ties in to the what. So does that help with?
Y'all missed it.
Does that help with? Like this, so if citizens receive a twenty-five percent discount, which is approximately three point nine million, all, this whole formula seems to be intertwined. Right?
So.
Like, does this point system tie into the three point nine million?
Yes.
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 Again, that's what I'm trying to tie it to. So if, if the residents are only getting a total combined of three point nine million.
No, that, no, that's not true. You got to add all the costs that we would have had to charge our residents.
I'm trying to identify, there's obviously multiple different buckets within this policy.
So there are, I'll, I'll just put it to you, there is a slew of activities that are in the CRS system. And it ranges from the board doing ordinance changes that get you maximized points, or other activities up to including education. How do we know, how do we, how do we educate the citizens on flood insurance?
But Andy, if, if I could, I mean, I think the commissioner's point is trying to get to a point of diminishing returns here, right? There's, there's low-hanging fruit, right? To go from a nine to an eight to a seven, pretty easy. To go from a seven to a six, little more gymnastics. To go from a five to a four, I'm told it's kind of paperwork. But for the, for the county to go from a four to a three, let even a two is extreme.
It's, yeah, that would include ordinance changes.
And may not be worth.
Yeah, that would include a, a lot of moving factors.
So are there pieces to this crazy formula that takes accountants and lawyers and whoever else to drive up this return to the direct homeowner to a higher value of three point nine million?
That I'll have to get back with you, sir. I, I, I have to get with you on that. I have no idea.
Generally, each grade of the CRS, so to, as you change a grade, it's an additional five percent.
Yeah, so Pinellas went down to forty percent discount on their homeowner, on the flood insurance, so more people can afford it. But their substantial damage number is, is much less, right? It's, it's thirty percent, thirty percent. If your home is thirty percent damaged and you have to rebuild. The idea, and I, I understand it, is to get more and more people out of harm's way. And therefore, um, uh, the citizens, you know, in America pay less into FEMA, right? To, to keep paying over and over again for repetitive loss. I think that's fiscally responsible. It does put some people in harm's way financially, and I'd like to know how we can help those people more. I have seen in, in the other counties where they're giving, the counties or the cities are giving loans or grants to residents. And where is that money coming from? Is that what the HUD money, is that something we can do with this HUD money?
Yeah, and I think we're, as we, we look at the HUD, the HUD money, and we're, we're getting, we'll be setting up individual meetings. We have them already coming, where we're going to be looking and exploring ideas and, and talking with HUD. So we can, I think these are all, again, we would not have gotten the HUD money had we not really even participated in this. So I, I think, again, that's another tool in the toolbox, uh, to your point on, you know, saving federal tax dollars is, is really perhaps, you know, one goal of the program that, you know, we can look at. You know, to, to provide some relief to, to those affected. But there's certain restrictions. Again, there's always rules and restrictions that come with those dollars.
And let's not say that FEMA's going away. I think the idea is that they're going to, maybe they're talking about bringing it to the state level rather than the federal level, but we're still going to have expenses and bills and rules and, um, Commissioner Mariano, did you have your, one other point? Okay.
So I mean, you know, talking about people in harm's way, people decide they want to live on the water. I'll just go, for instance, and maybe along a river, whatever it may be. That's their choice, still America. Utopia is okay, the best thing for us to do would not have them there, but if they want to be there, who are we to say they shouldn't be?
But then they shouldn't be getting any federal money.
But let them build the place where they want, and they won't even need the federal money. So I want to work, Jeff, I really love that idea you brought up. Let's go look at what we just went through, because this storm event, it should be, maybe we can get that BFE number changed to make people, or allow people where they want to live. Because a lot of people, I mean, I'd say, watching the community come together to rebuild, it was just amazing. And I would think that they'd be so much better off if they were up that extra four foot and didn't have anything to do, other than getting their cars out of there, getting themselves out of there, when the storm came in, and then go back in the next day.
Commissioner Mariano, are, are they on septic or are they on county?
Yeah, county water.
County water.
Yeah.
Because I have Alfris Parkway, which would never, I have residents that are literally living in the river. They would never have been permitted today, never. They are on septic. And I can tell you, if you drive, all the stuff they have in their yard.
Is that where you took the boat?
Yes.
Oh, Lord.
They, they would never be allowed to live there today. And, um, and we have been able to use a federal program to help buy some of them out. And maybe we need to look at that, if there's that special program, I don't remember, we talked about it before.
Yes, ma'am.
To help these people, because with that money, they can move, they get moving assist, they buy the house at full market value, not the one that's seventy-five percent. They get the house bought at full market value, they get moving costs and down payment assistance. So it's a, I think it's a really good program. But I personally don't think anyone should be living, especially on the right side of Alfris Parkway, in the river. It puts our first responders at risk when they have to go in there, um, and, um, do rescues. All their garbage, all their effluent is going down the river into the neighborhoods downstream. And, and so we're going to, one of the programs we're going to be looking at with the HUD money is to bring the county, um, sewers, county utilities into that neighborhood and get them off septic. Because we can't force them to come out, apparently, except for this federal program that makes them raise up.
If you remember, they had one house that was really high up, a mobile home, really high lifted.
Yeah.
And they got nothing.
Yeah, but they're still on septic, so.
Yeah, and so it's still, wait.
Yeah.
Contaminated water.
So, so there's some people that live on the coast that just went through this, they don't want to go through it again, they're going to find another place to live.
Yeah.
Others want to stay there. They got family, they got friends, their lifestyle is what they want. So I, I think this approach of looking at, trying to, what can we do to raise them at just that four or five-foot level to keep them safe for major events like this, we're going to be in great shape. I think that we, we take that approach is what the people want. And I think we, we need to be responsive to that. Let them make the decision, but let's go try to work with the federal government to go make this change. They're, I think, so vulnerable right now, that I think they're going to be attentive to say, what's the best thing to go do? I think anybody looks at this, if you could take ninety-five to ninety-eight percent of the damage, it would have been eliminated just by going to that number, it's worth going. So JP, I know you've got a great team behind you, and if you can kind of like, get, get us teed up for that, it may carry some weight for us to go through. The other thing we can do as well, to try to help with our own utilities, there's all these canals, concrete canals around. There's new technology that's out there where you can actually put a living seawall. It's a hard wall, protects it, helps water quality. And if we raise and allow people to raise up, maybe the seawall's three or four feet. And you get a whole neighborhood to go around that, all those peninsulas, if they all line up together, now you're keeping all that water out in the Gulf too, which is not the great thing for a long-term plan to, you know, make it, make us more resilient.
Okay, um, I think you should let Brian go, but I, I don't think we've addressed what Commissioner Oakley was talking about.
So I, I kind of had that on my list to come back. I, I call it kind of the bottom of the hill sort of effect. And I think the one thing I, I'll add for color, and either, and either my, my guys in the corner or Brian want to, you know, when, when a property, when a property is developed, you know, to, um, you know, David talked a lot about uh, post-development conditions and water that flows off of the four corners of that piece of property. It can be no more than depending upon the level. So I would argue that if, if the site is designed and contains the water in the right way, and not barring the specific example of the project you mentioned, which we are looking into, uh, I would, I would say that that water is contained and put into a stormwater system uh, that is then ensures that those post-development runoff conditions are met. And so even though it, it may look like this, uh, the amount of water that is flowing off of that property should be no more than what, what the intention of the regulations is. And so if it's a hundred-year flood, I would maintain that you would have seen that amount of water in, in the pre-development condition, regardless of the post-development conditions. I hope that makes sense, and, and I'm looking at these guys to say, you know, am I, am I articulating that correctly?
Yeah, yeah, and, and I just wanted to add too, as, as part of what we're doing on the planning and development side is we're updating our comprehensive plan. So part of that includes future land use areas. But then following that, as part of our overall strategic plan, is we're also looking to update the land development code. And I think that's the opportunity that, that then you have as, you know, the governing body to take a look at, are we at that right level? Is that twenty-five-year number the right number? Or do we look at something more restrictive? But, but I think as, as to Mr. Armstrong's point, there's a trade-off to that. And, and that's going to be higher cost, less intense development. And part of the challenge is, is that when you're looking at a specific piece of property, it's, it's really about the intensity and timing of when runoff is going to come off of the site. And so if you were to look at something that's, say, a hundred percent paved, you're going to have a lot of intensity, high flow right away versus an area that may not be developed. And, and, and the challenge is, is at some form of, or some level of rainfall, you're still going to get flooding and runoff from that site, because the ground's going to get so saturated that it has to move off-site. you're still gonna get flooding and runoff from that site because the ground's gonna get so saturated that it has to move off-site. And so it's, it's, it's a difficult challenge that we have is trying to balance what is the acceptable risk versus that cost. And so, again, I, I would say that we're gonna be going through a land development code update, update. And I think that's, that would be an opportune time to think about, are we at that right level for where we want to be at the county moving forward?
True, and, and also I was thinking when Commissioner Oakley was speaking, you know, if, if the rules are now that you have to be at a certain elevation, and they built before there were rules, right? Well, you can't, that, if you didn't let them build to that elevation, they, they couldn't even build, right? So, um, we have to have that.
And what about like a neighborhood like Thousand Oaks?
Well, that's a, that's an anomaly.
It's a long story.
Yeah, that's, that's a self, that's a self-inflicted anomaly.
But I'm saying none of these programs would help those people in Thousand Oaks.
I mean, buyouts and certain things.
Well, we, we talked about before you got here.
Okay.
Um, we can fill you in.
Okay.
Well, let me just help her though.
Okay.
Um, and, and I know when you set a dentist appointment up for a year, you, even though we schedule meetings.
Now, we had, we had emergencies.
Mine was emergency.
Mine too.
Mercy, okay.
Yeah.
Anyway, so, so we were talking about water conveyance in that whole area, and the water's gotta flow out. We talked about working with the associations to get them to do what they're supposed to do. Brian's gonna try to help us with that as well, so, uh, if the water can flow out, like Oak Ridge doesn't flood, and the reserve, they, Swiftman did a great job working with them to go get their, to clean their water out. It's a matter of getting that water to flow. And if it can flow, that whole situation, that can get a lot better. And they did build a little bit low because of the drought that we had, but it could still get a lot better than what it is now if we can convey the water out where it needs to go.
Okay, thank you.
So if there's no other questions here for, for Andy and his team, Brian, I'd like just to kind of, I don't know if there's anything to, you'd like to touch on that maybe we didn't touch on, or, or areas from which you've picked up from the flavor of our conversations today. I'd like to give you an opportunity to speak.
Appreciate that, thanks for the invitation today. I try to teach my folks to be, to be brief, bold, and be gone, so. See if I can do that. Fortunately, going last, you, we've covered most of the topics that I would, I wanted to touch on, which were, what do we do? We talked about the tech, the technical assistance we provide, we talked about permitting to a great extent. And then lastly, structures. And here's, um, the first thing I'd like to do is introduce my staff. I brought them all here, they're in the front row, and I want you guys to meet them. At the far right is Amber, most of you probably know Amber, she's the liaison, she's our government affairs coordinator. Gentlemen in the blue shirt, this is Dr. Mark Folkerson. There, I, I would wager that there is not a better authority on the Withlacoochee River, every bend of it and how it flows. But Mark also assisted greatly, because you know, everything on the east side either goes to the Withlacoochee or the Hillsboro, and what Mark taught me is that the Hillsboro is really just a branch of the Withlacoochee. So, um, he is well-versed in that, and we sent him over here, he spent days riding around with, uh, the, uh, Dade City, and folks in Dade City, trying to decide, do we close that hospital? Do we close that nursing homes? And so he's there to thank, he also found the obstruction in the drainage, the fallen footbridge that was the reason a lot of the water. So, you know, Mark, what a yeoman's effort Mark put in during these hurricanes. And I wanted to thank him publicly for that. Jeanette is, uh, she's the money, she's the project, she's the one who, her group does all the watershed mapping. They also do all the cooperative funding and the district initiatives. And then lastly, Michelle Hopkins is the leader of our regulatory division, all aspects of it, from water use permitting to ERP. So these are your folks. And then lastly, Chris is my general counsel, he's just here to make sure I don't get in trouble. He, he gives me the look if I start to stray, so, thank you again.
We got one of those.
They'll, they'll be here.
Frank.
Oh!
Frank.
Frank. Frank, how do I put this? Frank deals with our extra special characters, that he, we assign him to help further them along instead of consuming all my staff's time. He is our ombudsman, and he's also here to help. They'll be here a little while afterwards, if you have any questions. And Chris will speak to you directly about the HOAs, he's got a lot of information about that. So with that, what do we do? Tech support, permitting, and structures. So when you hear structures, most people think flood control structures, right? No, we, 20% of our structures are for flood control, the other 80% is to hold water back. They're conservation structures. We're all familiar with impacts from pumping and modifications to drainage and what it does to the environment. Most of our structures are there to try and maintain some sort of hydrology for our environment, and that's the balance in all of this. We get the question a lot, we heard, I'm gonna try and go through things that I heard that I didn't cover. So why can't we just lower all these levels before a storm? Well, I've lived in the Tampa Bay area for 50-plus years, and I can, I can't even count on these hands and toes how many times a hurricane was gonna come and hit Tampa Bay. This is really the first time it ever did, right? In that 50-plus-year period. If I lower these, because everybody who has been impacted said, why don't you just lower it to the lowest level? One, you're gonna impact the environment when it doesn't, when the storm makes a crazy turn. And two, you're gonna call me more often because your boat is sitting at the bottom of a lake bottom. So that's all part of this balance of how much water, how much time. And here's the big thing about our structures, not one of them has a pump. All our structures are governed by gravity. So for us to decide how much water we're gonna release, usually we get about a week, maybe two weeks now when the storm's coming, I can't empty a lake then. We don't have the ability to move that much water that fast. So it's a long-term plan, how much we're gonna let out, pray for rain that it comes to fill them back up, and not to the detriment of the environment, because we're not allowed to do that either with control of these structures. So most people don't understand that about our structures. Like I said, East Pasco, every, water just wants to reach a level, and that level is sea level. Whether it's above the ground, getting out to the coast, through the rivers, getting out to the bay, or underground through drainage. It all just wants to seek equilibrium. So in that thought, you have to consider this storm, you know, these riverine systems that reached out a mile, and when they went back, there's all these pockmarks in the topography. That, the only water that's going is down, and it takes forever.
Yeah.
And guess what? Things are still charged, so with every rainfall we get, that level's just gonna come right back up. So that's why people are experiencing in these zones, they've never seen it, and why it's not going away, because it's only outfalls through the ground, and that's very slow.
And that has nothing to do with development?
That is not development, that is nature.
That's nature.
So, and then the other thing is, to help answer this question about, why don't we just lower everything this or do that? We're actually gonna have a workshop after our governing board. It's more of a regional-scale workshop on flows and floods, scenario-based. Okay, if we take historical data and we lower to that, to that level, here's what your lake would look like, you know, most of the time if we did that. Here's the environmental impact that could happen. So that's all gonna be part of our workshop after our board in March, and that board will be held in Tampa. So we talked about a lot of things, ERP rules, the difference between 100-year, 200-years, the impact that would have on infrastructure and costs and things of that nature. With that, I'll just leave it open for any questions, if you have any.
I knew, Commissioner Mariano.
Thank you. Well, I want to say, your, your team's been phenomenal from work with John Pwanda to Amber.
John's gone, right?
Yeah.
Everybody gets to retire.
Been phenomenal. Jason hooked up all, all the work we have done together. And then, you know, this, this board worked with you guys in that cooperative program, which we learned how to do it, and you, you took care of so many things, Timber Oaks, Holiday Hills, Gulf Islands.
Thousand Oaks.
Leisure Loats, uh, Leisure Lane, Palm Terrace, we're working on that one. By the way, we had the storm going on this summer, and we're trying to take care of Palm Terrace along Ranch Road. You guys were phenomenal working with it. I thought the best thing to do was work on one, like one part with the ponds we had, but they, he, he wouldn't let us go do it, but you let us go take down that spray field. We had a good spot to go put the fill, and I'll tell you, you kept hundreds of people going underwater again for weeks at a time, which has happened for so many years. So I, I wanted to say that I greatly appreciate working with you. Uh, I do want to take a look at all the things we've talked about between reservoirs, maybe some side drop-offs that could be created with MB land that we have right now, every bit of the way through. And if there is a way that we can look at to write that letter to the Army Corps, love to do that. And especially working on the conveyance down that Trinity area, I think there's an opportunity there too.
I want to, uh, jump on the Trinity area. When we, um, did the, uh, when we had all those meetings for the, I guess, the Trinity or Thousand Oaks Task Force, what did we call it? The flood task force for the Trinity area, um, you know, and we really studied the flow. And we learned that BMP-8, I'm pretty sure it is, is water that goes under Trinity Boulevard into Pinellas County. Or, or no, but takes Pinellas County water and brings it under Little Road. And, and the intent at the time, when we were in the drought and had, had the low water levels, was to, um, bring the water into the wetland system there. We, once the pumping was regulated and the water table came up, we don't need Pinellas water coming into, um, Thousand Oaks. So, uh, we never went as far as, we looked at turning off BMP-8 and letting that water go, go south instead of coming, bringing it back in. Is that a possibility that we could look at that, that one?
Right, please.
And, um, let them not worry about rehydrating Thousand Oaks, it doesn't need it anymore. So that's one. And two, um, more often than not now Little Road is going underwater in big rain events. And Little Road is part of the SIS system, which is, for those who don't know, that's part of the hurricane evacuation system for, um, Pinellas County that's coming up, uh, if they're coming up north. And then we have to shut it down. And that's not, that's not a good system, so that's why I'm, I have concerns about that, the flow in the Trinity area. And I really want someone to look at those ponds along Trinity Boulevard that are never, uh, they're always full. And shouldn't they go down in a, when it's drier?
And somehow they were designed.
So, um, I, I don't, I don't understand why they, they never go down. But I'd really like to look at BMP-8, and I'd really like to understand a solution for that Little Road area between Trinity Boulevard and State Road 54.
If I could with that too.
Yeah.
It's a phenomenal point, when we look at all the 10 different BMPs that were out there, that was one that was looked, let that water flow, let it go where it's supposed to go.
Yeah.
Not be making any change.
It's redirected to go into Thousand Oaks.
I will say at Heritage Springs, I did play, let's say, this spring, that water level did drop down a bit.
You saw, you saw some on Trinity Boulevard?
Uh, just in Heritage Springs now.
Okay, no, you gotta look at the ones along Trinity Boulevard.
Oh, no, no, you mentioned Heritage Springs, I just wanted to bring it up, that, the water levels did drop there.
Okay.
Now downstream, could have been some blocks, so, so be it.
You mentioned, uh, that there were some blockages along the Hillsboro River, oh, Withlacoochee? Sorry, Ron, I didn't see you up. I don't know anyone who goes down our rivers like the Anklot here and the Pitlochess Cody and looks for blockages. And that's, that's what I'm talking about when they cleared them out, uh, a decade ago on parts of the Anklot. And I really think we need to look at that. Commissioner Oakley.
Basically, I want to talk about Tank Lake area and that area behind the hospital and, and some of those issues. I think when Morningside Drive comes in, give us the best opportunity ever to clear that up for Pasadena Hills on that northern side. Ever since I was at Swiftmo from '07 to '11, there's been flooding and issues there. There's a house been built in the last five or six years, and maybe a little longer than that. And, and actually in the floodplain of, of that lake, that tank lake, on the north side of, uh, Pasadena Hills, which are there, the, one of the families that are screaming and hollering about the water over their road, and, but they're in the lake.
Did they get a permit? Did you look?
I've gotta look back, I gotta find that, but somehow they got a permit to be, and they're in a flood zone. But they're screaming for help from the county, and actually they're on private property, and they built in a flood zone, they built in a lake. And they're gonna look at, well, look at my road, it's covered with water. There's nothing we can do, it's a private road, they can build and put dirt in on it. But I think I heard toward the end of last week that the state was gonna reach in and help us with that area. Did I hear something like that?
On, on the Tank Lake area, yeah, I believe we ended up.
But I think, uh, there's an opportunity with the Evans family and the Morningside Drive coming through there. They're talking about possibly selling some of that Tank Lake area that they don't need for waterway. We'll be able to maybe do some storage along there and also release it to go to, out to Withlacoochee under, under 301. I think that needs to be looked at under 301, because it's, it's pretty grown up now. But I remember way back, wow, maybe when I was at Swiftmo shortly thereafter, we dug that canal all the way from Lake Javita, I think, all the way through, all the way to where it would go toward the river, and it flows that way. But I've never, I've been there my entire life, and the first time I ever saw it come up and go underneath 301.
Come back.
Yeah. So, but I think there's a real opportunity with that building, that Morningside Drive, to correct that where it won't be a problem in the future, so. And, and I believe it's one that's, some monies are prepared to build a road in there, going to actually take care of some of that drainage, so.
Commissioner Oakley, um, Buddy Lake, you know, had that sinkhole thing.
Yeah.
Uh, did it fill back up in this rain event, or is it still?
I hadn't, I hadn't seen that, I don't think it filled back up, but there's, because that fact is, uh, that's environmental and it's nature.
Yeah.
There's no way to correct that, you can't go in and fill it.
But you can't send up water, you can't send water over there if they're so much lower than everybody in?
No.
It's just gonna reach groundwater level.
Yeah, just whatever the groundwater is, that's what it's gonna be, so.
That's interesting that it didn't fill it back up.
I don't know if it has or not.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I'm curious about.
That's been some of the issue we got with, um, Tank Lake area, is we're trying to,
All the water went to.
Trying to pump water over that, over that old railroad track bed. And there's, there is a pipe in there that will take water out. But that, if that pipe had been lowered a foot or so lower than it is today, a lot of that water would go out prior to flooding some of those homes there in Pasadena Hills.
Like, I can tell you, not to belabor this discussion, but if you want to get with Mark after this, he, he'll be able to describe the majority of how everything flows there and what potentially could help and could not help.
Right, okay.
He'll help you.
That'd be good.
And the interesting thing about reservoirs, you know, in these low areas, you can't store water underwater, so there's no digging. Everything has to be built up from ground service.
We don't have much storage capacity in our.
But in that Tank Lake, some of that shallow, that storage, we could make that storage a little bit better.
Yeah.
And, and help the flood at the same time, so, yeah. I think there's an opportunity there that, not necessarily a savings of money, but there's money being used for a certain thing. And then the benefit is also getting some of that drainage.
Could I ask about Silver Oaks? And, um, is there any kind of possible solution for them? And how many houses got in harm's way in this last storm?
Well, um, silver, in Silver Oaks, the real problem came when, when the Smith brothers decided they're gonna build homes in the lake. And I said, that's been an issue the entire time.
Is that in the county or the city?
That's, I think that, part of that's in the county, I think, so.
The, so I'll jump in, um, the golf course itself is, is within the city. There's parts in the area there that are, that are within the county, south especially. We just recently went to Andy's LMS meeting, Public Works, um, at the request of our county administrator, to make sure that that project called the Zephyr Creek Canal is going to be on the LMS strategy for consideration for funding in the future. It's a three-part project, so there's a downstream outfall which will uncork much of that system. There's the middle area that'll improve conveyance and drainage through that area. And then there's the third part of that upstream, which will help move some of that water. And our partners from Zephyr Hills are here as well, um, to try to move some of that water out of the golf course quicker by, by improving the conveyance system that's at the southern end of that golf course and allow for that to, to drain underneath the road into that Zephyr Creek system. So we, we are looking at ways to, to implement that three-part project to help that golf course drain faster.
I know if there's a pump system or something, we'll take that water and put it over on, uh, trying to think of the road now, across the way we're going that pond before.
Geiger?
Geiger, yeah. Geiger Pond, when Geiger Pond was put in and done by the county, it took about 1,100 homes out of, out of flood zone.
Nice.
That are actually in Vetmar Acres. And there were people there that actually were taking a little more time than I thought it should, but there were people that could not afford flood insurance and they were being required to buy it. But when Geiger Lake came in, it, it did that, it took 1,100 homes out of floodplain, was a great improvement. But I always thought there was some way that maybe either from the north end or, or even right there at the road on, on Island.
Island.
That there's some kind of pump system where it would gather water and actually pump it as it, as it gathers, rather than. it as it, as it gathers, rather than it just build up and then has a hard time getting on down the creek system.
Mm-hmm. Cost is when you move water, when you move water, you're putting it on someone else.
Well, I understand, but you gotta be careful how quick you move it and how you move it through.
You have to be careful, and in this instance, Zephyr Creek feeds Hillsborough River, Hillsborough River, that water goes behind the flood detention area, so my 27 square miles are full of water, and I really have to manage the flow there, because I've got Cypress Creek that comes unabated into the Hillsborough River to, that I then have to pop off into Tampa Bay bypass canal if I can, if it's not full. So just remember, everything from Pasco is either going to the coast or trying to get through Hillsborough County to go out to the Tampa Bay.
So it's all Pasco County water that goes?
That's what I've always said. The Hillsborough River is Pasco County water, and Tampa gets to use it for a cheap amount.
I know when I was at Swiftmud, somebody asked one of us, "Why do you go on all these different tours and all that?" I said, "Well, I'm sitting at that Deus up there." I said, "Someday, somebody's gonna ask me a question, and if I don't do it all these tours, I won't know how to answer that question." But I spent a lot of time understanding how everything flows, but I never thought about, too much about Hillsborough River. You wanted to get to Hillsborough River, but yet, when it, when it goes in Hillsborough River, it still affects somebody down the line.
That's right. Moore's Bridge, more specifically. So the more water you put through, the longer I have to close Moore's Bridge.
You're right. I got you.
I have a question about Zephyr Hills. I see Steve here. Steve, are you the only one here from?
No.
Okay.
City managers here.
All right, so, and I'm sorry, I can't, David, David's a big blocker over there. Are you guys in, participating in the NFIP?
I'm not sure.
That's what I, that's why I was wondering.
Yeah.
And what, what CRS level are you at?
I don't know.
How do you guys not know that? I'm kinda surprised that you don't know it, no, no offense or anything. Especially after going through a hurricane, you should absolutely know what level you're at, and, and, and I'm wondering, if I'm hearing that houses are built in a river, in a lake bottom, did, are they built to the requirements of FEMA at a certain elevation? Because we're getting all the calls about them being flooded, but did?
No, you're not getting all of them.
All right, yeah. True.
Just get part of it.
But how, okay, how can you have just gone through two hurricanes and not know your FEMA numbers?
Well, I don't, I'm sorry. I'll find out.
But your, your manager?
We don't know it right now. But our, our building official probably does, but he's not with you.
So Commissioner, I believe that even though the municipalities have their own CRS working group, they fall under our county rating of a five, because we have a working group together with all the municipalities that meet. I think it's quarterly now.
Okay, so every, but Newport Richie's not a five.
Well, you gotta remember, the level of water that came to the coast in Pasco County is much different than the level of water went through the city.
Yeah, but they're still dealing with FEMA.
I understand.
Yeah. Well, I, I'm guessing that Newport Richie's not a five. We have Mr. Altman here.
Might as well put my hand on the table, too, for you to.
Oh, you're Dade City?
He's Dade City, yeah.
Oh, do you remember what Newport Richie was?
I've got Newport Richie's shirt on today.
Yeah, yeah.
He works with Dade City.
I'm not sure what. I know that we just had a lot of discussion and working on that, so I suspect that I believe we are in the program.
Oh, I know, I know Newport Richie's in the program, and you have a five-year cumulative, and I wondered if, since it's so strict, that your CRS rating is much lower than ours, like a two, like Pinellas.
It's not that level. It's not that.
I'm finding out right now.
Again, the, the number escapes me. If I, if I have the opportunity, though, I'd like to at least make sure this group is aware, as I know that, Mr. Mariano is, that we have in May the summit of the Regional Planning Council, and I hope that as many people that are here, and I wanna commend Pasco County, because at the last summit, I think Pasco had more people there.
You spoke about that, yeah.
To participate, but those regional action plans and some of the things that are going on there, and some of the great minds to put on that, particularly, I also wanna thank Swiftmud. For the last year or two, you've had attendance at that, and it's helpful for them to be on our Resiliency Steering Committee. So I'm excited that everybody's working together. I'm more excited at the opportunity to work together with you on this large funding that's coming through HUD, which is, you know, badly needed, not only for the housing everyone's talked about, but also for some of the economic recovery, because all three of our cities that are here today, Zephyr Hill, Dade City, and Newport Richie, are really on an upward motion in terms of being good places to be and being an attractive part of your county. It's been a long time since we've had this kind of relationship with you, and we have a lot of things I think we'd like to contribute as well, so I look forward to that. Our city manager put a 10, so she allowed me to be here to speak for her, and then she'll quickly find out what I had to say. But we are working on a lot of things, and our business community flooded on Main Street, so as you talk about specific locations, we had a lot of offices, and we have a lot of joint assets, our sewer plant, our Green Key Beach, our purchases on Highway 19 in Maine. So this is a great opportunity, stormwater, because it should be a part of it, and I'm speaking so much because I am chairman of that steering committee, and I've just been, I've been flooded with stormwater conversation for years in that role, and I never liked stormwater when I first got on the city council back in the eighties.
It's important.
But now I can realize just how critical it is to our future.
Is Port Richie here? Anyone from Port Richie?
Well, thank you for letting me speak, Chair.
Yep.
Let me share?
Yeah, and then I wanted to say something about national flood insurance.
And Commissioner, Councilman Altman, as we talked before, and I did it publicly, but the, that Green Key project, as well as being a big stormwater project, worked with Swiftmud, getting state funding, I think putting that road up is a really good thing. And question for you, Leisure Beach, Van Durren area, how much water did it get in that, in that area, do you know?
No, I'm not aware, but I will tell you that you have some ideas, and I look forward to having the staff and the engineers and the folks of, of knowledge to help us to make it the best it can be, if that means shuffling things around before we get too far down the road, but the design of that might be a good opportunity to look at.
Yeah, I'd like to know what happened at Leisure. I didn't.
Jack, I, I might be able to give you some insight. I talked to somebody yesterday, and they said they got seven feet.
Seven feet in their house?
Yeah, seven, they own a business right on the water, and they got seven feet.
All right, you know what I meant? I meant to say Leisure Lane in the city.
Yeah, yeah, Leisure Lane.
Okay.
Like Rockville County. So, yeah, so Leisure Lane.
Because it's not on the water, yeah.
Thank you. So at Leisure Lane, one of the things we struggled with was couldn't build in a floodzone. If we were able to, like, get that BFE number down, that whole area, might be a lot easier to go put homes in there without having to worry about that flood elevation.
Um, talk, did you wanna answer that? Because I was gonna talk at a higher level.
Oh, no, I was gonna answer your question about the ratings.
Oh, okay.
So both the city of Newport Richie and Port Richie, their rating is a seven.
A seven? But they have a five-year cumulative FEMA, so that's, so those are independent of each other?
Yeah, so they, they might have not done some of the activities that makes them eligible to bring that score down, just seven to a five, I mean, to a six. So there's all sorts of activities you can do, and it's all point-based, so their point total might not have made it enough to bring it down to a six, a five, or a four.
But we, we have voted in the last couple of months to do things to talk about those issues to bring it down, so I know we've been taking action as, as a city council.
Interesting. One thing I wanted to touch on, this is a policy, a government policy decision, I think, but we've talked about it at NACO, and if you, you know, if you, you can't help but see in the news, the flooding now in Kentucky, what happened in North Carolina, the fires in California, that, that there's been discussion of, that should everyone be paying into something, into this emergency fund? And if everyone was paying something, then it would be lower for everybody. But so many people get caught. I know my cousin lost her place in Pacific Palisades, they, they couldn't even get fire insurance, so.
I think it's probably in fact, we all pay in.
Well, there's just, there's just been discussion, is it time for a national fund? I'm not saying I'm for or against it, it's just, it's one of those ROI things. I mean, if everyone pays in proportionately, maybe it helps everybody.
Dog just finding enough money to issue something like that.
Before you get on that road, think about NFIP. What are we paying? We got people that can't even afford to buy the insurance.
Well, that's because fewer people are paying into it.
Because they can't afford it.
I know, but if more people were paying into it, would it be less?
But they raised the prices up. The federal program raised the prices up over the past five years, like 10, 20 percent, and that forced a lot of people out. So I, I'm not gonna have faith in the federal government to put a big program together to make this fly.
Well, also for bringing it to the state level, it could be a state issue, right?
Got to get a better shot.
And like I said, I, I don't, I, I don't know the pros or cons of it, but there are people smarter than me discussing it, and, I mean, I, I'm always willing to listen to something and show me the numbers and see if it makes sense, and if it doesn't make sense, then you don't, you don't go down that path, but, Mr. Carballo?
Yes, no, unless there's any further questions for our guests, I'll happily kind of wrap up here. You know, Brian, thank you for, for being here today and for bringing your team with you. There may be some, some post, post-workshop conversations, I'm sure. Just appreciate all that you guys do. It's, it's truly, across the 16-county area, the Water Management District really does great work in terms of water supply, but in this particular case, you know, flood, flood reduction and abatement. Again, thank you to our, I'm sure municipalities who joined, too. Thank you for being out here. This is, this is not a, this is a Pasco County issue, right? This is, this is global, and so our cities are part of that, and I, I echo your sentiment. I'm happy to see the relationships that we have, Councilman Altman, with, with the various cities. It's, it has been, it has been great. To the team, thank you. I appreciate you and your efforts and, and working with, pulling together presentations, working with your teams to educate both the board and, and of course, the public on what it is that we currently do do. Sounds like we do do a lot, but always more, more can be done, and so we'll take away from this, I've pulled together some action items and things that, that we will certainly look into and, and see if there's traction that can be gained. So with that, Madam Chair, I'm.
I do have one more question. When we talk about the 2,000 homes that we think were substantially damaged, I guess it's a JP question.
Mm-hmm.
I can't see him. JP, does that, is that county only, or does that include homes within the city limits? So do, does Newport Richie, Zephyr Hills, Dade City, I don't know if Dade City had any, but do we have a number from those cities as well?
Seventy-three. Fifty-three in Zephyr.
Substantially damaged in Newport Richie? I know you had them on the river.
Yeah, I, you know, I was given the number of a thousand of homes that were damaged as substantially damaged. I don't have, I haven't heard that number, but I, I suspect it is, you know, in the hundreds.
Well, we, I think we'd like to have, to, be more informed, but I'd like to have the total numbers of the county.
Sure, we'll reach out to and coordinate.
I agree. Port Richie probably has some, too.
In closing, what was, what was your three B's? Bold, brief, and what?
Big on.
I love that.
Three, and big on. Put that on your wall, Mike.
Well, we're finishing before 12, so we're doing great here.
Let's put that on Stark's list every minute.
Who ran the shortest meeting ever?
Jack.
Jack.
Oh.
And whatever you had.
That didn't count. That one didn't count. I did listen to that meeting, by the way.